Are we all set? We're going to call to order the May 2nd, 2024 Select Board Meeting.
Keep it down.
All five members are present. Roger Marsan. Marsan, I blew it. I asked you and I still. Denise Luciano, Alec Rich, Steve Hornsby, and myself. And we will start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which this stands, one nation, united, proud, and individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Has that been here the whole time?
No, Roger brought that in.
We really need to see this in this location.
I know before.
We're also getting around. Before we get to the first item on the agenda, I'm going to add something that's not on the agenda. Hopefully, we'll not run afoul of the open meeting law. But we do have a new member of the board who is joining us tonight, who won an election this past Saturday. So we would love to welcome Roger Marsan to the Select Board.
Thank you very much.
So, yeah. And we'll get right to it. So the first item on the agenda under new business is the reorganization of the Select Board. I know there's a procedure here. I'm going to turn to you for the procedure we should follow, and then we'll get into it.
All right. So I'll ask for nominations for Chair. And once we pick a chair, then I'll step aside and then do the chair, being the vice-chair.
Okay.
All right.
All right. And the new chair is effective tonight. Right after we get going. Right after reports. Okay. All right. Alex is ready. All right. Okay. So.
All right. Are there any nominations for Chair of the Select Board?
I'd like to nominate Steve.
Second.
Okay. All right. Are there any other nominations? Is there a motion to close nominations?
Oh, a motion to close? Second?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close the vote.
We have one nomination. Is there a... Just taking the vote. All those in favor of Steve as Chair?
Aye.
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 And no votes. All right. All right.
You're off.
Oh, geez. Okay. So I guess I'll take nominations for Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Alec Rich as Vice Chair.
Okay. So the nomination for Alec Rich as Vice Chair, for a second?
A second.
A second. For any other voting nominations? Okay. So I guess we're going to close nominations for Vice Chair.
Make a motion to close nominations for Vice Chair.
Motion to the second. All in favor of closing nominations for Vice Chair?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So all in favor of Alec as being Vice Chair?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So now I'll take a nomination for Clerk.
I would like to nominate Denise Luciano for Clerk.
It's a second. You're too quiet over there, so I'm thinking maybe we'll get you to read some stuff.
Sir, would we have a second? Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Roger Marsan for Clerk.
Any other... Is there a second?
I'll have a second. So motion to the second. Any other... So how do we do this? Do we do... There was no second for Denise, so...
There was no second? Okay. Roger had a second, then you come to that vote. Okay. So all in favor of Roger as Clerk?
Aye.
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 All right. Congratulations.
All right. Jumping right into it.
Goodness. You guys give me this meeting, right? Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. All right. You want to keep going? Do you wish?
That's it.
I'm just kidding. All right. So I guess right off the bat, we have a discussion, vote or re-vote for the town meeting logistics.
So if I may, Mr. Chair, first thing we want to do is do the warrants.
Oh, I apologize.
It's okay.
So currently, is it me and then you? Is that what it was?
I think that's what it was. Yeah.
Okay. So we need to vote to have somebody that's going to sign for the warrants. Currently, it's I'm the first person, and Kevin is secondary. Initially, this was because I'm in town all the time, and it used to be you have to sign in person, but now we can do it remotely. So I'm happy to stay on. If somebody else would like to, I'm fine with that, too.
Mr. Chair, I don't see a reason to make a change.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
If you're fine with keeping it, then I don't think we need to do anything different. But...
Do we need to make a motion to nominate you to do that, or can you just continue to do it?
I think we can continue unless we have something to do with it. Yeah. You're still going to do it? Yeah. So I think it was me and then Kevin, the secondary. I would just... As long as you vote on it.
Just vote and let them change?
Just vote.
At that. Okay.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion for...
I make a motion that Mr. Hornsby stay on as the primary signer and that Mrs. Snyder is the on the secondary signer for all warrants.
Second. I'm rushing a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I guess now we're going to town meeting logistics. And this is something that has been come across as very confusing. So do we have Jack on? Do we have Lucia as well?
Yeah.
No, Lucia's going to have someone. Jack, are you there? I think you're muted if you can hear me.
Hello, Jack?
That was Peter, not Alec.
They sound so...
So we have Lucia as well. Lucia, you on still, too?
Here.
Okay. So with what we have so far, it's going to be very difficult from what I understand. So would you like to explain some of your concerns or some of the issues that you're coming across?
Who?
We can start with Jack or Lucia. Whoever wants to start first. Probably Jack. Maybe Jack.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Congratulations, by the way. So my number one priority is being able to provide attendees with a smooth, well-run meeting. And that includes being able to accommodate everyone with seating options and the ability to see and be heard, to see the content, hear the content, and be able to contribute to the meeting. With the topic at hand being the override, I'm concerned that we're going to have a ton of people in a space that cannot hold them with multiple overflow rooms and limited time to get the E V in place to do this successfully. And we have a legal obligation that anybody who wants to attend and participate at town meeting can. So you can't turn anybody away. It is a definite high-stakes event. I know Jason Benjamin at Lord Media Center said the E V company has confirmed that they are available. They don't know what the current E V plan is. Talked with Mike the other day, and he's thinking, you know, maybe 1,100 people. I personally think that that's low. I would say 1,500 plus, just based on the size of what we're talking about. So I'll lay that first as my biggest concern.
Can I... Jack, can you just go over again? Because I don't remember. How many people fit in the gym and how many in the auditorium?
Sure. So according to Wave Lazzat, Facilities Director, MPS, the gym can hold about 1,020 people. That's about 525 on the bleachers, and the rest seated on the floor. And in the auditorium, I believe it's somewhere close to 400, 370 to 400. We have less than, we get about 1,400 best case between those two areas. I was chatting with a prior moderator who had done a large override meeting before, and they had 2,500 people churn out, then spilled over into four different venues. They used the gym, the auditorium, the high school library, and the Yell. They had a shuttle bus going back and forth from St. Mary's for people. This parking is going to be another challenge. We just unfortunately, our town does not have a large enough venue for things like this to take place seamlessly.
Okay. My first... I mean, I think it's too late for this, but what about the field, the football field? Have you guys talked about that?
Mr. Chair, you're talking about... You're thinking about doing it outside?
Potentially, yes. I mean, if there's going to be that many people, is that an option? Have anybody discussed that as an option?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't know what the field capacity is or if we can with the new turf fields. I know there's some use concerns. I would have to check and wait on that.
Yeah, with the chairs.
I did ask around to see what size spaces meeting has, and they're even smaller than ours till now. Crazy. It does need to be held within town limits, so we could not even ask about the Xfinity Center, which would be really cool, rent around the meeting from the stage, always welcome to the A R star.
Yeah. Yeah, that's extremely difficult. Yeah, if we get 2,000 people, which I assume we're going to get, that's going to be very difficult.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Roger.
Do any of the new industrial buildings that have been put up that aren't already filled up with uses been considered for any of this possible?
I can speak from what I know. I don't think so. Mike, you can speak to that, maybe? No. It's a... I mean, there's only one. I don't know how it's set up inside, how it's broken down in the space. Yeah, there's one that's open. Can't be all private property. It can be all private property, yeah. But I would imagine parking would be an issue. Yeah, with the private property.
Possibly insurance, too, on there, right? Because you have to have all those people on the property. They don't have to do that.
I just didn't know if we had a building that hadn't been already used for something.
The new senior center was open. I know I could be bringing up an old subject, but I'll bring it up again, just to bring it up, that if you were to schedule an override election for June 8th, you could have town meeting on the 15th. You could pass all the articles. You could pass the 1% budget and continue the town meeting until June 17th, contingent upon the override passing. And then if the override didn't pass, we'd need to have some members of the Select Board, the moderator and the town clerk, go to the high school on June 17th and open and close the meeting. But at least that way, I mean, these logistics that we're talking about, we've got to rent shares, we've got to pay the E V company, we're talking about $50,000 in expenses to have a town meeting for two override questions that may not even pass out of ballot. So I'm just throwing it out. Yeah. I know you mentioned that last week, and I brought it up a while back, too. Thank you, Jack. Lucia, do you have any... Anything to add as far as your concerns?
My only concerns are ballot vote. A motion has to be made on the floor to have a ballot vote, which 11 people have to agree to. Ballots are 26 cents per ballot. I don't know how many you'd want to bottom. We have five machines. The timing on putting the ballot into the machine is seven seconds. So think about the time it's going to take as far as if you have three votes that we got to park in several hours to run these ballots through to tally them up. I don't know. That's all really I have.
So what would be the cost of that? Because just like you're saying, if we...
Well, if you take... If you... You take 3,000 ballot... If you anticipate 3,000 people there, then you figure if there's three different votes, so you're going to talk 9,000 ballots at 26 cents per ballot. I didn't calculate that one. Seven, three, seven. So you're going probably about three grand in ballots.
And then the people's time is, right?
Sorry?
And then the time of your poll workers. Right?
The time of the...
The election workers, sorry. The election workers.
The election work... For town meeting, they donate their time, so there won't be any bucks. I do want you to know, if you're going to do ballots, then you better decide that. I don't mean it that way, but you have to decide it tonight because just for the generic yes-no ballot, they're hoping that we get the order in on Monday. Tomorrow, I placed the order, and they're hoping it will get... They'd be done by a week from Monday, by the time town meeting comes. They are inundated right now. There's 351 towns in Massachusetts, and they're inundated with town elections and the other town, and ballots. So really, you have to make some fast decisions, I guess.
I would think you would only need one ballot, just like the question at the polls, one ballot. If there's a 4 million override and a 6.5 million override, and people could vote on those.
So I thought the warrant article was just going to read those two budgets contingent upon the election ballot.
Right.
All three budgets, I should say. Right?
But at town meeting, if you're going to... You'd have to vote to approve the 1% budget. You'd have to vote to approve budget with a $4 million override, and you'd have to vote to approve the budget with a $6.5 million override. So the 1% you would need to vote on, that's the default budget.
So it's one of the things we'd have to vote on them separately.
Well, the ballots are different at the town meeting as opposed to putting it to an election.
Correct. I'm saying at the town meeting, I thought it would be one warrant article, all three budgets. If you pass it, it was contingent upon the election results, right?
Well, you will have an A budget, a B budget, and a C budget, and the town meeting members could vote down a B budget, or they could vote for a B budget but vote down a C budget. They'd have to be voted separately, those budgets at town meeting?
I don't think they have to. It's our choice, right? But I think...
But I think what you could... Mr. Chair, I think what you're suggesting is that the way the logistics could work is you have a discussion on the regular budget. You vote on the regular... Or vote or not vote on the regular budget. Then you have a discussion on the $4 million budget. You don't have to vote on it. You can continue the discussion on the $6.5 million budget. And you have one ballot that you give to everyone, and you pass it out, and you have it voted. So everybody's just getting one ballot instead of three.
Yeah. And that's assuming that there's only going to be a request for a ballot vote for each two. But there could be a request for a ballot vote for all of them.
Correct. Yeah.
So that's why we would need all those ballots.
You could have them all on that one page, I guess. Just that's just...
My understanding leading that meeting, the joint meeting, was it was going to be one question. One question. It was going to be all three budgets, and it was either pass or fail. And if it passes, then goes to election, and the election determines.
And that was my understanding when I motioned for that, but it's not the case. Lucia, go ahead.
Now, if I may, you... The point I'm sorry I'm trying to make is that you're talking to hopefully get the ballot on time with just a yes or no. If you put three questions on one ballot, it's not going to happen in time. They can't... The programming involved, they can't get it done by town meeting. So the only way they can possibly get it done, and they'd let me know, is to just have your generic yes-no ballot. You either... You fill in the oval for yes or no, and that's it. But the programming on the one ballot, you're not going to see it by in town for town meetings.
So it would have to be... So we'd have to have multiple ballots, then? Jack, one?
Fine.
All right. Jack, you have your... Go ahead.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I ran the numbers based on what Lucia was saying, seven seconds per ballot using five machines, and I just used 2,000 ballots as a baseline. That's about... It's over two hours just to run the ballots.
And, Jack, also, you're not counting... They have to... The election workers, they have to tally those. I mean, we pulled the tapes, but you're talking also, if somebody puts a check mark instead of filling in the oval, that ballot's got to be hand counted. So you've got to allow a little extra time to get the tally and done.
Mr. Chair?
So just... Mr. Chair, pardon me?
Go ahead, Jack.
Yep. So just to kind of expand on what Lucia's saying, so we would not only need to debate the article, we would have to now vote on it and allow for the tallying. And the voting alone is over two hours. The hand counting, I would defer to Lucia on, but I don't think any one of us anticipates that the discussion about this article is going to be brief. That's just a... That's going to be a huge chunk of time to even just process the results of this question. Thank you.
I figured you could. Go ahead, Roger.
I'm just curious about how the logistic would work processing the ballots if we're in remote locations as well? How do you get those... That information back and forth and get the ballots to them?
That's a great question for Lucia. Go ahead.
Can you repeat that, Roger, please?
Lucia, I'm just curious about how we get, if we have remote locations, say we have overflow at the Yell School, how do we get ballots? Because we... I'm sure you want to have control of them, but how do you get the ballots to there, get them voted on, and get them back, and get them processed? I'm just imagining that amount of time.
You have to split the machine... You have to split the machines up at the locations, and you didn't have to have separate crews there. And also, just so you know, there has to be at each location, but even at one location, you have to have a police officer standing at the ballot machines witnessing and overlooking the voting.
At each machine?
No, just one.
If... If they're in several locations?
Auditorium, in the gym, that you can have one police officer standing behind, and he keeps his eye on everything, the end depositing it into the machines.
So if there's... Lucia, if there's machines... If there's machines in different rooms, different locations, like one in the Yell, one in the... In the gym, would there be... Have to be a police officer in each one of those rooms?
Yes, there would be.
So now we're adding four officers. Tonight, I had asked Lucia to look into, because of that time, Lucia had told me that it'll be like two and a half hours. Is there a way to have ballot boxes where people fill out their ballot, they drop it in a box? When everyone's dropped all their ballots in the boxes, we can go back and continue town meeting while Lucia's workers are running them through the machine?
You're still taking a lot of the time, like a seven-second ballot. You're still got your second... Seven seconds for each ballot. If you're going to go into the next thingy there, the next article, whatever, yeah, I suppose that would give them time to deposit them. Yeah, you could.
You don't need to have a ballot. We could do the paper, we've been can't count, which isn't... I know you probably prefer the ballot, but it looks faster.
Well, if somebody requests a ballot, then we have to have a ballot. Yeah, that would be the only... And that's going to happen. It's going to happen.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, Mr. Chair? And to Lucia's point, if we are voting on the 4.5 million dollar, we can't really move on to the 6 million dollar. People are going to want to know what the ballot vote was, what's the count on... How did that turn out before we're able to move on to the 6 million dollar?
So you're saying it's going to be easy overall, right? Okay.
But we only have one warrant article for budget. How do you split that to three different votes? We have to have one vote. I thought that's why we took but being contingent on the election that follows.
It is, but town meeting has to approve those budgets.
Right. You're approving them like... Are you either approving or rejecting the warrant article that has all three? The two overrides are contingent upon the election.
But it's... There may be people that don't want any override at all, so they're going to approve the 1% budget. It's not... It's not all or nothing. It's... You approve a 1% budget, so you have a budget that will be put in place if the overrides don't pass. So you vote on having the 1% budget, a 4 million, or a 6.5 million.
So our...
And each one has to be approved at town meeting because it has to be approved at town meeting and has to be approved by the ballot. So if it's a 4 million... If 4 million went to the ballot, it has to be approved specifically at the town meeting, too.
I mean, we probably should have town council here, but we have one warrant article. We can't create new warrant articles.
No, it's not created. The town council's idea. Yeah, the...
Town council said that the override amounts contingent upon...
Right.
The vote.
And town council... You have one warrant article to approve a budget, and...
All three budgets.
A, B, C. Which budget? I want budget A. I want budget B. I want budget C. So it's one warrant article split up by A, B, and C.
Mr. Chair? Can't any one of those budgets be changed anytime as well?
Yes, we can move on or move on, yeah.
And then you go on that separately, right? Someone could...
I don't imagine.
Mr. Chair? Jack, if I could ask you a question? We've done this before, where we've had this, you know, we've had a number of people. Sounds like the big difference is the number of budgets we would be voting on. Is it your opinion that... I guess I'm going to ask for your opinion. Is it your... Do you think that we could... Do you think that we would need to extend the time of the town meeting? In other words, right now, we're looking at like seven till, let's say, 11-ish. You know, I'll just throw it out there. Would it make sense to, you know, change... Please don't throw anything at me. Change the date of the town meeting to something where we could do it... We could have a longer town meeting time, like do it from 5 to 11, or do it on a Saturday, or, you know, whatever we could do to try to extend the amount of time we have to make sure this works. And I'll just add, what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to not disregard the goal of this, which was to be able to have the discussion at town meeting on budgets with everybody present to have that discussion, to give everybody an opportunity to speak who wants to speak, to really... To give it to the town meeting, which is our form of government. You know, so I want to make sure that that still happens. I don't want... I wouldn't want the logistics to overrule what we all have decided is what we kind of want for this process, what we, you know, kind of previously decided. So I just don't want the logistics... I just don't want the logistics making a decision for us. But, Jack, I don't know if there was a question in there, but any comments on, has there any discussion of, I guess, changing the date or trying to do something where we could accommodate this meeting?
So I think that's a great question for town council. I'm meeting with her tomorrow afternoon, so that's on my list of questions to ask. From... tomorrow afternoon, so that's on my list of questions to ask. Uh, from, they might correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the select board sets the date and time of town meeting. I know that's true initially. I don't know if that's also true when they move it. That's the moderator. I believe it's like, well. That's true, but I don't think you move it this close to town meeting. That's the question.
The other option is, um, you could have town meeting scheduled on 13th, not take up the budget article and, um, do all, all the other business and continue town meeting to a Saturday, pick a, a date on, on a Saturday, and, uh, then you, you know, have it on a Saturday at 10 o'clock in the morning, and then you're not constrained by time as much.
So if, if, say we go to town meeting, we do that and we continue it, do we need a certain time period to, to announce when it's gonna be continued to?
Well, I would, I wouldn't do it that-
No.
That very Saturday. That's, I mean, no, you don't, because, uh, once you open town meeting, you can always, if, say, we, we have town meeting scheduled for Monday and Wednesday, um, if we weren't able to finish everything on Wednesday, we'd have to, the moderator, with the agreement of the select board, would have to say, um, we're, we're gonna close tonight and reconvene on next Monday.
Yeah, I was, I was more concerned about notification, because if, if we're not gonna do the budget on the 13th, and we, we push it to, you know, say, let's say, three weeks later, um, I want to make sure that those people that were gonna come on the 13th are, are aware that it's gonna be pushed out. I don't want notification to, to kind of be lost.
I mean, if you made that decision tonight, given 12 days, right, more or less notice to everyone, and, uh, and then at the town meeting, you could announce the date when you're gonna have the next one, wait like a couple of weeks or something, two Saturdays.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Jack. I'm sorry.
So just a, a process question, if I can. Um, when does the warrant need to be posted? Is it next Monday?
Yes.
Okay. So just to procedurally point something out, if that article remains on the warrants, anybody can move that on the town meeting floor. So despite anything that we tell people that our intent is not to take it up, if it's there, anybody can make a motion from the floor, if it's seven, and then now it's, it's up to the day.
Oh, Jack, wait for a wrench.
What you could do is, you would have to remove that article from the warrant, and then call this special, I think. I defer to Mike on that, but if you leave it on the warrant, it can get moved from the floor of town meeting.
Right. No, it definitely could. I think that's a topic we'll definitely should have tomorrow with town council.
But we would have to vote on that before Monday. So if you have the discussion tomorrow...
I can't do it. It's impossible.
I'm not good with math, but I think I'm running out of days.
So she's, so she'll be able to post it in general.
Lucia, did you want to say something?
What are you talking about?
Mr. Chair, um, sorry, Kevin, but just a, a quick thing the act of logistics, um, to think about, uh, if you hold it on Monday night and you start it at seven, there's no way it's gonna start at seven. You're gonna have a massive line for check-in. Um, the last time we did that, um, with the override, we had the meeting in the gym, the line was down to the Yale School. Um, so I don't, I don't see your meeting starting at seven o'clock.
All right, thank you, Lucia.
That's my thought.
I feel like it's getting messier, not cleaner.
We were supposed to wrap this up. What the heck is going on?
I think, I sound like, I think that Kevin's idea of moving it to the Saturday, or in the days you have longer bandwidth to kind of run all the articles, might be the cleanest of the options, well, the not everyone's preferred option, I don't know, but that's an easier option. Yeah, I did deal with A D one time versus dealing with A D in rooms.
Yeah, I, I do like that idea. I think because it's already posted and noticed, I think we have to deal with it on the 13th. Um, but then, to Jack's point, if, if the budget's on the art, if it's on there-
Right.
-anybody can move it. So then we're kind of back to square one again.
Mr. Chair, um, Jack, could we, could we open the meeting on the 13th with just a small number of, um, folks, like the select board and, uh, you know, whoever, whoever it is, can we open the meeting and then immediately continue the meeting, so we avoid the possibility here of someone moving it?
Kevin, it's like you're living in my brain. For one of, one of the COVID meetings where we were out on the field and raining, so we, we had agreed at the, our select board meeting, we were working, we scheduled, uh, I met Walter and Lucia down the field, and we opened it and continued it, and then that was that.
I remember those days, Jack. I remember those days, Jack, and I remember during COVID, the meetings would be held in the football field spaced out and-
Six feet.
Six feet under. Remember those days?
Six feet under.
And also, I remember-
I hope not. And theoretically, we could still find a field. Couldn't necessarily be the high school field. What about the other school fields, right?
Yeah, I was thinking that.
It doesn't have the turf fields.
You do have concerns with ADA if you have it on a field, because it needs to be accessible. Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I don't want to belabor-
Go ahead.
Do we, um, Jack, it, it sounds like you have obvious concerns about this being ready to go, uh, Lucia as well, um, this being ready to go on the 13th. So, um, do you think, would, would, do you think it would be, is it your opinion that we should, we should push the date out?
Ooh, put me on the spot here, Kevin.
Sorry.
I, at, at present, I have extremely serious concerns that we would be able to run a town meeting that is compliant with state law on the 13th, based on everything that we've heard and the amount of time enough to prep for it. Lucia, what do you think?
I, I totally agree. I think, I agree.
Okay. So any further discussion on this, uh, the logistics of the town meeting? Because I think, I think, you know, if we're gonna make any change, I think we should go through the next two items and then kind of make changes as, as we go through those. All right. Thank you guys very much. All right. Thanks, all. I'll be on if you need me. All right. Thanks, Jack. Thank you.
If you're not for bloody days, then you could have the election before.
That is, that is an option, and which is why I want to go through the rest of this before we do make any decisions.
I'm getting, getting an answer from town council here. Is Jack still on?
Yeah, Jack's still on.
Yep.
Yeah, and just a reminder, if I recall correctly, if the election is before the town meeting, we would have to hold public meetings on the budget specifically before the election, because she said that the town meeting acts as that open forum. So if we remove the town meeting from before the election, now we have to have an open forum.
He's leaving.
Oh, he's out. He's done.
He's gonna call town.
Yeah, welcome.
Roger, you're a jinx. Um, I think, um, Mr. Chair, yeah, I think Denise is correct in that you have to have public, um, discussions of the budget, um, like a public hearing you have to have for the budget. Um, then I would be concerned that we move everything around, we change the way we were planning to do this, and now we have to also plan for a meeting of 800 people to show up for a public hearing on the budget, because that would be the only place that people can discuss budget.
My, my question will be, and, and when Mike comes back, is, uh, was the FinCon meeting essentially the public hearing of that budget?
It was, it was not.
Yeah.
Town council is pretty clear on that, I think, to that.
It ha, it has to be like a noted public, public hearing.
Posted.
Has to be posted and all that. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. But, um, yeah, I think that's, you know, it has to be like specifically open as a public hearing.
Exactly.
All right. Sorry. I won't ask anymore.
You can ask as many as you want at that time. All right. Um, so without Mike, I guess we're gonna skip over the, the articles for now, and, uh...
There we is. Here's Mike.
All right.
Andy Savage. Can we win the tricks? Dad jokes?
I can, Jack, it was a joke, Jack.
Do you guys know that Albert Einstein was a real person? This entire time, I thought he was just a theoretical physicist.
That is a dad joke, for sure.
How long is Mike gonna be?
Mr. Chairman, the public hearing, couldn't you have it like the FinCon did remotely to avoid all those logistics? Was that allowed? I don't know.
That's a, that's a question for Mike and town council, just to be sure. I want to make sure we do it the right way, so, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'd be definitely concerned about the number of people coming to an online public hearing. If it's 800 people and people, yeah, that could be, that could be difficult.
You have to give everyone an opportune read to speak, for sure.
Right.
And I, I understood it as it being a special meeting, not like a FinCon meeting, and it's open to the public, and be specifically for the budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can ask a question of Lucia if you, if you have to stall.
Can you just stall, Lucia?
Lucia, does, um, having the, uh, having the town meeting on a weekend, um, does it have any special concerns for you?
None at all. I think, you know, if I may, um, me just thinking is far as what my responsibilities are. Um, I also think we have to take into consideration, we have, we have committees formed, um, to vote against the override, and then a committee to vote for the override. Um, and then it's been approved, and I'm not being sarcastic, that Brett can sell popcorn. Um, I think, I, I think we, we get a, my, my concern from me and my responsibility is making check-in as soon as possible. Um, I just see a lot of chaos going on. Um, and there's gotta be controls. You know what I'm saying?
That's, that's an understatement. Yeah, it's, it, it feels like it's gotten just way out of control here. And, you know, Kevin and I are partially to blame for our four million and 6.5 million dollar ideas ourselves, so.
Perfect time to be jinxed.
We know it's true.
Yeah.
But I think it's fucking on Saturday.
Sorry. Sorry, what was that, Lucia?
I'm, I'm all for a weekend. I don't, I have no issues with that. I think I'd like that better with more time, and maybe if we get a good day, we can do it outside.
Let some more popcorn.
We might want that popcorn as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Make your popcorn here.
Play some nips.
Go ahead, Roger.
While Mike's gone, could we go to see if there's any old business or anything? We could finish up some of these, uh...
Yeah, I don't think we have any old business. Is there any old business?
I don't know if there's anything. I just want to try, if we can just move this along as expeditiously as possible.
Yeah, we need Mike for the next two items that are on our agenda, so hopefully he's gonna be back here in a second, but-
Yeah. If anybody has any topics, uh...
If, if, um...
May I, Mr. Chair?
No.
Well, what we could, what we could do without Mike here is, we could, we could proceed with the, uh, the idea of opening the town meeting on 5/13 and continuing it. And then maybe the five of us can talk about how, how, how that would look, and start talking about a plan for how that would look, right? So, like, I was just gonna start writing down, we open the mouth, town meeting on, on the 13th, um, we continue, right, continue town meeting to future, um, Saturday, whatever, whatever, whatever we pick, you know, June X. Um, that gives Jack time, Jack and Lucia and Mike, uh, time to, um, work on the logistics, make sure public safety's all there, you know, all on board, um, you know, where logistics, safety, meet with whoever they need to meet with. Um, then we have to, um, communicate with the town, right? So whether that's, whether that's a, um, an alert or something like that, that we could, that we could send out, right? I mean, that seems to be our best communication method to everyone. You know, maybe we send out a notification that this is what's gonna happen, we're gonna open the meeting, we're gonna continue the meeting, uh, and then the select board will select another date, uh, in the future or whatever for, um, for the, for the town meeting.
Make sure we have a date selected right when we get that notice, so we're giving the notice at the same time as what that date could be, right?
Mr. Chair, do you want?
Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, I would think that-
I'm having your dates too, so.
I would think that would, that would make sense, is to communicate, you communicate everything all at one time. I don't, I wouldn't think that we would want to be in a spot where we're telling the town, okay, we're gonna have, we're gonna continue this meeting, um, and then we're not gonna, but the date's still up in the air.
Yeah, I think the more notice we give everybody, the better.
Yeah.
That would be a disaster.
Yeah.
So then, I guess before we pick a date, we should probably understand from, from Lucia, are you still there? Like, how long does it take her realistically? Because she's trying to do yes, no right now. If you wanted to have, let's say, three questions, worst case scenario, right? How long? What is the time that she needs for that, and you kind of back it to?
Well, she, she said if she ordered tomorrow, she could have them in about a week or so, so what?
She said just yes, no.
Or just yes, no. So I'm just, let's, let's assume two weeks, you know, just to be safe. But I, I mean, I wouldn't ask for anything, especially if you're gonna continue it and make sure everybody has enough time to know and to, you know, make plans to go there.
I just wonder if they, they can be ready in the two weeks timeframe, so we're not then having the same problem now.
So, Mr. Chair, oh, sorry, Roger's on.
Good.
So how far out can we push this? What's the deadline?
There's really no, I mean, deadline per se, except for, you know, the, the budgets are gonna be-
No, I understand. The people are gonna start running out of money. So, um, when do we have to have this done?
We, there's no, as, as far as I know, there's no particular date. July 1 is when the new budgets start. Um, but there was talk, before we even made these decisions, to, to maybe do it in July, August, and have a vote then. So, you know, once that takes place, then the budget will kick in immediately. So there's, there's no real specific deadline for that, as far as I know.
So we're not under a time crunch, saying that we have to have this in two weeks, is what you're saying?
No, no. And, you know, I, months and months ago, we were under a time crunch, but now we're not, apparently, so.
It seemed like that to me when I was on the other side of the table watching. That seemed like everything had a deadline, and we had to be moving quickly to, uh, an end, and it was a cliff at the end of that.
Yeah.
It doesn't seem like the cliff is there.
Yeah. So, so, I mean, what I'd like to do as soon as Mike's off the phone, um, is to go through the, the town meeting articles and then discuss the budgets. Uh, I wanna, I wanna hear, um, I did get a chance to watch the FinCon game last night, which was, what, 17, 18 hours?
Four hours. Even four hours.
And see what they came up with, uh, and then we can make decisions as proof as to move forward, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Okay. I just, but I, I don't want to feel like we're in a time crunch, like we have to make this happen, like, all right, if it's not the 13th, then it has to be the 17th.
Yeah, so, so, uh, in my mind, the time crunch right now is the warrants, because we, they have to post them on Monday. So those are, you need to do those first, um, and then deal with everything else. Okay, what'd you learn?
So, um, Lauren said you cannot pull it off the warrant and then have another warrant. You can only have one annual warrant. Um, so the, there's a couple options. One, you could, it hasn't been posted yet, so you could just continue the whole town meeting. And, uh, or, uh, I think what she suggests would be better in that case is to put out on social media on that you're not going to hold town meeting on, uh, the 13th, and that members of the select board, the moderator, uh, the town clerk, and maybe a finance committee member go there that night just to open and continue the town meeting. Um, you know, and, um, if you have the town meeting, someone could make a motion, and you could post on social media and wherever else that this was gonna be done in advance of the town meeting. Um, someone could make a motion to, um, not take up the budget until a time date certain in the future, so that you could plan that approach.
And Denise brought up a good point. Um, if, if we were to have a vote before then, as an actual ballot vote, um, would we have to have the, the, what was it, open meeting of the, um, public area?
Create the election before the-
If we had the election before the town-
You'd have to have, as I understood from council, you had that separate-
Yeah, so if, so say we continue the meeting, so we could, we could have that ballot vote.
So the, the only way you could do that was you, that someone would have to make a motion, um, say that, um, we're only gonna take up the 1% budget today, and, um, that af- say that we're only going to take up the 1% budget today, and that after the ballot, we're going to, we're going to continue the town meeting to this date, which would be after the ballot vote, and if the ballot vote passed, you got to come back to town meeting and reappropriate that money. If it didn't pass.
So, so, say, say, say nothing's even scheduled, right? Say, say nothing's scheduled?
Yeah.
And we, we put a, we put a vote out, a ballot vote out, an election vote out for, for these budgets? Do we have to have, do we have to have an open meeting for that too, beforehand, to discuss our budgets?
Mike, I think, I think the town council said that having a town meeting before the election was the open forum to have the budget discussion. If you now have the budget after the election, you still have to have a forum for the town to discuss the budget, be able to voice the thing, so you have to have a meeting.
Yeah, I'll ask for that tomorrow, but.
That's easy tonight.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Jack.
Just, again, hate to be the wet blanket, but as Mike's saying that you can make a motion to not take up the budget, it still requires a vote on the floor of town.
Yeah.
So, that is far away from a, a certain thing, if that's your plan.
Which could also turn into a ballot.
That's your intended approach.
That in itself could turn into a ballot vote too, there.
Correct.
That's all.
I guess, say, you're not helping, guys. I thought this was going to be easy tonight.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a stupid question?
Yes, go ahead.
Very short, I'm sorry. Do I have to go up?
Yes.
About 45 minutes, so they'll, they'll know who I am by now. I know during the election, like, a week ago, two weeks ago, whenever it was, a week ago, there were like three different giant sports things that were happening all day. Are we worried about a Saturday, or like in June, and I might not know this, in June, maybe there are less, but are we worried about a bunch of town being at soccer games all day and stuff?
I, I can speak to that. I know for the past at least three, four years that I've been involved, we've requested that they don't have those, and they've just ignored it, and they just haven't.
Just curious.
Yeah, I mean, we can request it, I don't think, because those schedules are put forth way in advance.
Got it.
So I think, I think if it, this is my opinion, if we do change it to another area, we try to make that work where there's nothing going on there, I mean.
I think most of them end by the end of May, because there's usually states after that.
Yeah, they don't have to.
Yeah, because the MIA, attorney, in June.
Right.
Okay, anything further on the town meeting logistics that is the easiest topic of tonight? No, really, if that's the easiest one. All right, come on up.
Ralph Stephanie, 12 James Street. When we had the debt exclusion for the repair of the high school, I was asked to be a moderator in one of the three buildings. It was a world spare goat race. No one's ever been to a goat race, neither were we, in three different buildings. People wanted to take a shot at me, fist, fisticuffs, people were pee off because of the logistics of the building that I was in. We controlled it, but the meeting didn't start until 9:00, because it was lined up outside the driveway and almost to the street. No, they weren't headed that way, they were headed toward the high school, and they couldn't park their car. And I remember being there early, because Jason happened to be a friend of mine, and I wanted to see if I could help. And in one building, the logistics of the microphones, the ability to communicate with one building, and a third building, and a second building, it was horrible. It was like pulling the pin on a grenade and throwing it right into the soup. And it was a mess. You had to get up, you had to control, in my case, 650 people with a microphone, and I wasn't the real moderator, in terms of, I was asked to be an alternate moderator in that building. I really didn't have the control that I would like to have, and people were, when I would say, "Okay, we'll start right here, and you go up and sign in for your ballot." Well, people got up everywhere and just got in line. And it became a pushing situation, it became unwieldy. We didn't even have a policeman at that meeting. So had we had a policeman, you'd have to look into the, the cost of that police beside the 50 grand that you're talking about. You got to look at buses that you're going to have to rent, either Gator, you're going to have to park, you're going to have to have babysitters. So it's the logistics of this so-called world spare that you want to pull off in, how long? Three weeks?
Two.
Two, two and a half.
Two and a half weeks?
Week and a half.
I don't know the answer, but no one's talked about those logistics. I was involved with it, I understood what was going on, but I had no control. It wasn't like the auction business where I have control of my audience, and they're my guests, as an auctioneer. I had no control. I understand that the mics went down, they weren't mics, they were almost like walkie-talkies, because they needed that special ability to contact and talk with the then-town clerk.
So I think, yeah, I think.
This is not, this is not an easy one.
So I, I think, and I'll speak for myself, I think, I think when we, you know, when I motioned for this a few weeks back, I assumed the logistics would be fairly easier than they actually are, and that was a wrong assumption on my part, so, you know, I think.
You presume.
I presumed, and I think.
I don't like the word assumption, I just don't like it, because people kind of like jokingly say, "Yeah, you and me," assumption.
Yeah.
Assume. No, you're, you're in a hot spot, and you had very little to do with the outcome. You didn't say one, and four, and six, and six, seven, it came out of nowhere.
So let's, let's.
So why not put the blame, and I'll do this, why not put the blame on the people who created the situation?
So, hold on, hold on, Ralph, hold on one second, let's, we're sticking to, I want to stick to the topics here, and we're on the logistics of the meeting. I appreciate your comments on the meeting, yeah.
Thank you.
Knowing that somebody was there in one of those rooms is helpful to them too. So thank you, Ralph. Anybody else? Go ahead, Peter.
Peter Williams, Yarri Mary Norton, and I remember the meeting back in June 6 of 2011, and there was a lot of people there, and it was for the debt exclusion for the high school, and I was there too, and it was on the night of the Boston Bruins Stanley Cup Finals game number three against the Vancouver Canucks, in that night, and there was reports on the game, and there was a lot of people there, and yours truly was there, and I voted yes on the debt exclusion back in June 2011, so, select board, you're going to have a tough job to do, and hopefully you'll find a solution and make it right.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You reminded me of the Bruins' round tonight, Francis. So, so speaking of the Bruins being on right now, let's, let's move on. Okay, so, are we all done with logistics of the town meeting? Is there any other questions on the board?
Do we need to set any dates?
I, we probably do. I think, I honestly, I think we should go through the articles and the budget first, and kind of figure out everything all together, as far as dates, if that's okay with everybody?
Yeah.
All right. So I guess we're on to the, the town meeting articles? There's a couple we didn't get on last time, right?
So, if we could move to Article 10, because there's a few people here to present on that article. Article 10 is an article submitted by the Water and Sewer Commission, and this is to borrow $8.6 million for a water and sewer project on Elm Street. And Steve Peterson from Western Sampson, who was here previously to present. And I will, I'll share a, I'll point the presentation, so it's up on the screen.
This, this, this is the one we saw before, right? Welcome. Go ahead, Roger.
Thanks, Mike. So while Mike's bringing up the presentation, I'll just give you some background, so, we gave the initial presentation on this before this board, back in March. We've been trying to get the word out as best we can through public outreach, we've met with the finance committee, we've met with, we've had one public meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we have another public meeting scheduled for May 8. The previous one, a lot of the residents from, from Elm Street showed up. I'm hopeful that we can get even some more attendance at the, at the May 8 meeting, to make sure the information is getting, getting out there properly. So this presentation, I want to walk through it again, we can move kind of quickly through some of the early stuff, but we've definitely gotten a lot of feedback, a lot of the issues with the way the article team presented, and the concerns that people have, so I think we can touch on some of that stuff tonight, and try and address some of those issues. Basically, just so that, just to make sure everybody has all of the information, as we, we think about this, you know, what we consider an important project. So, yeah, that's just all of you, so I'll give you a quick overview of the project, but we really need to get into the issues that have been discussed. So, you know, the scope has evolved a little over time as we've gone through the, these meetings, but basically, as it's constituted, it consists of 4,800 million feet of age-gravity sewer pipe on Elm Street and Miller Terrace. It's fronting, the sewer piece is fronting approximately 50 properties, there's one municipal pump station, at this point, the proposed site is down at Library Park, off of Elm Street, and in addition, there's, the entire length of Elm Street is proposed to be, the water main is proposed for replacement, basically improvements, to improve the, the fire pressure, the water pressure on that road. So that's the scope of the project. The reason we're even this far on it, we're even talking about it, and I said this in all the presentation, is the grant monies that have never seen. So the entire design that we're putting together, and needs to be completed by the end of this fiscal year, which it will be, we're very close, that's been entirely grant-funded. And that was actually Paul, when he was here, so Paul is here in the audience this evening. When he was here previously as town planner, he put that grant application together, with help from others, and then we also got an economic development bill. So, grant monies to pay for the design, it gives where we are, and then during the design process, the town also applied for a construction grant through the Mass Works program, and received $3.5 million, which is one of the largest grants that that program has ever given out. That's a significant amount of money, and the Mass Works grants are focused on creating housing and jobs. So the grants are really, the catalyst behind the grants is the property of 47 Elm Street, which I mentioned before. I won't go into the background, so we can talk more about the situation at 47 Elm Street, the history behind it, Paul can obviously provide some insight on that. If you go to the next slide, Mike, you know, the, the biggest thing to remember, and the reason that the town's pursued these grants, is that the master plan identified that property as a priority economic target area, it also identified that its infrastructure investments to promote economic development were critical, so that's kind of the heart of this part that we're talking about right now. Devco North America is pursuing ownership of the property, and, you know, Mike and Paul can talk more to where they're at in that process. At this point, they're talking about a development of 140 to 150 apartments, as well as some commercial space. There's still significant remediation work to be done at the property, and the infrastructure improvements we're talking about are critical or necessary for the level of development that's being discussed at that property. So that's kind of, you know, if you want to discuss why we're here, why are we talking about it, hopefully everybody understands that that's why. That's, that's why we're going to talk about it. We can debate how we're approaching it from here, so let's talk about what everybody wants to talk about, right? How much is it going to cost, and how are we going to pay for it? So there's two portions to it, there's the water main and the sewer, just focus on the number, at the bottom, the total budget it costs is between 7.3 million and 8.4 million right now, based on the project as it's constituted and the information that we have gathered. If you look at the blocks below, how are we going to pay for it? So right away, you take the 3.5 million off the top, right? You have a grant for 3.5 million dollars, so it's a big chunk. The water portion of the work is proposed to be paid with water rates. So the majority of the town is on water, there's already water on Elm Street, this is an improvement. Based on the number of users in the system, the water rates can support improvements, that's how they do the, the water main upgrades within town, is through the water rates. So that's how that piece will be handled. So that leaves 1.8 million to 2.5 million that needs to be paid for to build this property. That's the remaining amount of money that needs to be covered. So the way most communities pay for sewers is through some form of using betterment assessments to the properties that are fronted by the project, and just in the word itself, betterments, it is, if you see, an improvement to the property, the ability to have a sewer in front of your property, and to be able to get rid of your septic system is considered an improvement. So that's the concept of betterments, that's what NORT has done on their recent sewer projects, they've used betterment assessments to cover a significant portion of the cost of the project. So for this specific project, the way the betterments work is you take the, the dollars that you're trying to recover, and you divide it by the total equivalent dwelling units, EDUs, along the way, and an EDU is equivalent to one single family home. So we equate everything along the way to a single family home. All the single family homes are one EDU, duplex homes are two, and so on and so forth. There's a commercial property, based on their water use, they get equated a number of EDUs based on how many single family homes are. So, based on the number of, the range of EDUs that I have up there, we can talk a little bit more about that below, the proposed betterment assessment for this project is 8,600 to 12,000. And if you look below that, so with, when someone's assessed a betterment, they can, they have the option to pay it in full when they get it, I think within 30 days, and then if they don't pay it, it gets assessed to their taxes. So it goes on their tax bill, so someone that, that chooses to have a portion to their taxes, which is the more common, depending on the, how much the betterment is, so in this case, that range, at 5% over 20 years, and we can talk about the interest rate, that's $690 to $960 a year, depending on where the betterments come in. Under the betterment laws, you can either, they're kind of quirky, you can either assess 5% straight out, or up to 2% more than the rate you borrow at. So if, when we borrow, it's less than 5%, which I don't think it is right now, but if, if so, then that could come down a little bit. It won't go any higher than the 5%, but that's the rate we're using, because regardless of what interest rate you pay, you can assess 5%. So if that makes sense. So the, there's been a lot of discussion about the betterment, you know, assessing these properties along the way, as far as where that number comes from, you know, so for. As far as where that number comes from, you know, so for West Main Street, the betterments were $16,000. This can be lower, basically because of the grant. You take the grant monies out and the density, the number of EDUs that we're applying to that. To go back to, I guess there's some bullet up here. Without the grant, those numbers would be between 22.4 and 28.7. We probably wouldn't be talking about it with betterments at that rate. But, you know, betterments are all over the place. People ask the question, you know, what other communities pay? It's very hard to compare. Every situation is different in how towns approach it. I would say these are very much in the, in the range of what we're seeing. So again, $16,000 for West Main. One of the most recent projects we could find locally, because it's also, when, it was not, you can look at projects that were assessed betterment 20 years ago and they're going to be lower. So Easton just did a project, the sewer extension project in 2021. They estimated the betterment's going to be like $30,000 and they got a Mass Works grant. Project came in a little lower than the budgeted cost. Their betterments were $20,000. There are examples of betterments that are lower. I'm not trying to, people can do the research, all the research you want. The only mechanisms the sewer division has that control that number is, the other, another way to lower it is you could charge the users, which is very uncommon. So we could use the user rates, like we talked about the water, we're using the water rates. It's not sustainable. There's not enough people on sewer. This is new infrastructure. We're expanding the system. We would not recommend and the sewer division would not be able to support just increasing the user rates and having the existing, the limited number of existing users pay to bring more users in. That's not typically how it works. So that's why we don't use the user rates. So really, the other mechanism you have to lower that number is the tax rate. You can put, you know, towns, you can put a portion on the tax rate. That is not how Norton has done the past projects. That's why we've modeled it this way. So that's how the better, that's where the betterment comes from. That's why it's where it is. So I think the, hopefully the numbers make sense. So let's talk about the EDUs. So the residents themselves, between Elm Street and Miller Terrace add up to about 64 EDU. They said there were 50 properties. Again, there's some multifamily housing and whatnot. So that's 64 EDUs. So at that range of betterments, that's about .5 to .7 million of that cost or about 30% of that remaining share that we talked about could be being paid by the residents that are getting this infrastructure. And then 47 Elm Street, we talked about the apartments, 140 to 150 units plus some commercial space. If that is what gets built out there, that's a high number of EDUs. So at 145 to 155 EDUs, their share is between $1.3 million and $1.8 million, about 70% of the remaining share. One of the things that does keep coming up is how do we know somebody's going to develop that property? We don't have, we don't know for sure yet. So there's concern about that. There's angst about, you know, why do this now? And we can, we can tell you because if you don't, it's less likely this property will ever get built on. But that's one of the questions that's come up. So, and this property being in receivership, if we assess a $1.3 or $1.8 million assessment to that property and nobody owns it, then the town has to pick it up until somebody does. And Mike can explain this better. But I know you ran some numbers, Mike, you had accounting, and it was like $136,000 a year on the taxes if the town has to pay that. And then that would get recovered. So then explain, Mike, what would happen if they didn't?
So, by the way, on the property itself, I gave you a letter that DevCo North America, they're now teaming up with Macro Credinale from Credinale Properties. They've done a lot of development and managed here to work on the project. So that portion that's going to be assessed to that location, hopefully they, by the time the project's done, they're on board and we don't have to worry about this. But if, if they weren't on board, we'd be, the town still has to pay the loan. So at that amount, looking at, you know, anywhere, what was it again? Up to $1.8 million, was it?
Yeah, $1.3 to $1.8.
$1.3 to $1.8. That would, the payment a year would be $135,900 the town would have to pay. We would put a lien on that property for any payments we make towards their betterments. And just if that property, as we envisioned, being developed into apartments, 140 to 150, whatever they do, just as an example, 274 East Main Street, their, this year, their taxes were $602,844 to the town. So that's what we could anticipate, you know, in $500, $600,000 range, depending on what they, how many apartments they build at that location. So not only are we getting a site cleaned up, we're going to start generating tax dollars to the town.
Potentially. It's not guaranteed.
And I don't know if all of you are on the board. We're meeting after meeting. People are coming in from down in that area wanting us to do something with this property. They wanted that building gone. The town doesn't have the money to tear down that building and clean up the site. It's not going to become a park because we can't afford to do that. So the best option we had, and, you know, Paul was fortunate, we were fortunate that Paul was able to get some grant money, was to move forward to try and attract a developer, which we've done, and get the infrastructure in so that can be developed. So, and just if I, if I can keep going on, on Elm Street. I had a health agent check, because I know one of the concerns always is that after seven years, people would have to tie into the sewer. There have only been four or five systems installed on Elm Street in the last 10 years in that neighborhood. So there are a lot of aging, aging systems there. And I just think if you look at it, that the betterments are a cost to these people. And if they didn't have the betterment, you're helping them out. Well, you may be helping them out short-term, but maybe creating a long-term disaster when their systems fail. Because the, the average cost for our system installation in Massachusetts right now is $20,000. And any complicated system could cost you a lot more than that. So I, I think we have a great opportunity here with this $3.5 million grant. As Steve was saying, the cost without that, what it would be. And I bring back 274 East Main where the sewer was going to be developed as a public sewer. And people didn't want that because they didn't want to have to tie in. So it was not put out in the road. And about two years after the apartment complex went in, one of the condo associations across the street came to the town hall because their septic systems were failing. And they wanted to tie in. You can't tie in now. You didn't want the issue.
So we, we went through this a couple of weeks back, this entire proposal. I just want to make it clear that the, the betterment assessment to each unit is not a tie-in fee. It's not any fee to, to connect their septic, it's just a, it's a fee on top of whatever they're going to have to pay to tie in. So I want to make sure that that's clear.
And that was this next slide.
Yeah, sorry.
So I'll continue. So along what Mike was saying. So that's one of the other issues that has raised concerns, the requirement to tie in. So town, again, this is not a water sewer commission thing, this is a town by law. Town requires, town usually require you to tie in with two years. This has been oddly debated. It's just been at town meeting in recent years. So it got raised to five years and then it got raised to seven years. So it's at the mercy of the town meeting, what people want to do with that, but right now it's at seven years. The reason it's so critical is, is what I talked about before with the user rates. You know, it's not a, it's an expensive infrastructure to put in the ground. It's not, oh, let's go put sewers in all these neighborhoods and then if people's systems fail, they can tie into it. We need people, we need support to pay for the system that we're designing. There's paying for it to build it and then there's to operate and maintain it. So if you build this whole thing and then of the 50 residents, there's only three of them tie in, you know, there's only three more people on the user base, you know, it affects the rate. The rate has to go up. The fewer people that tie in, the rate, you know, is, is dependent upon that. So that's, that's why the town has a bylaw that requires people to tie in. It's why we're building it, is so that people. The current, alright, so based on the water use records of the properties out there, the single-family homes and across town, just to put it in perspective, the current estimated user charge is about $100 a liter for a single-family residential home that uses a typical amount of water. Everybody uses different amounts, but that's, that's the average. So the actual cost to hire someone and come and connect into the sewer is definitely, there's definitely a wide range. Because, and the biggest things that drive the cost are the length of the connection, the soil conditions, and the surface restoration. Are you going through landscaping beds or are you just coming down the side of your house and doing low maintenance? We've talked to the local installers that do this. You know, they basically quoted, you know, one of the contractors that does most of the septic systems and sewer connections. Said the average system costs about $75,000 is what they said. So I think the real average range is in that $7,000 to $10,000 range. That's assuming within 100 feet of the road, moderate digging conditions, not anything extreme, and low maintenance. You know, just digging up your grass and getting out to the street. So the stubs along the way, so the main line goes down the street. We leave a stub off of the pavement, off of the right-of-way to each property to connect into when they're ready to connect. So they don't dig up into the road again. So there's no cost with paying. If they choose to come down their driveway, that's, that's what they choose to do. And I think Mike already talked about, you know, to install or replace a system. Again, the local contractor in our data tells us a typical cost is about 20 grand. They, this range a lot, again, the same, same factors other than, you know, the length of condition doesn't commit, the length of connection doesn't commit. But I think, you know, there's history of systems recently in town at $40,000. Those costs are, are higher than connected. There is a Title V loan program, you know, some people ask about this. So in addition to be able to take out a loan for repairing your septic system, it's also eligible for sewer connections. So similar to the betterments, you know, whether your cost of hiring a contractor, you can take out a 5% loan. That one's over 15 years and it gets paid on your taxes like the betterment does. So there is a mechanism for homeowners when they need to tie in to apply for a loan through the town, through the Board of Health to connect to the sewer. So that's the sewer connection process. I think those are the, those are the big things that, that have been discussed. Are we going to, are we just building it in case somebody wants to come to 47 Elm? You know, why are we assessing people along the way? Why are we requiring them to tie in? Those are the questions that have come up. And that's why. I can only give you the why. So Mike, I don't, the next slides are, I think that's it. I mean, I think the other, the other slides are just about where we're at. I mean, we obviously have an article at town meetings. Yeah, I think that's what you needed to know.
Yeah, we went through all this before too, so I, I had a couple of quick questions. So the, the water rates are going to be part of the?
For the, for the water piece, yeah.
Is there an intention to raise the water rates to that or is that just going to come out of what's?
The intent is for it to come out of what's there, but they, you know, each year they have to evaluate the rates versus what the costs are that year. John, am I accurate in saying that? I'm going to pull you on this one.
There's talks of water rate study, but it's not, not tied to this project.
Okay, yeah, my question would please specifically.
So there isn't a specific rate?
In a specific way, it's going to make it.
Because of this.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
No, I do, I do want to clarify. So DevCo is in conversations with Cudnell, but they specifically say that they have not formally partnered yet. So I just, I do want to clarify that. So there's still a lot of question marks. I watched the PIMCOM meeting on Monday. It was a great discussion that they had. And for me, it's kind of like a risk versus rewards balance.
I'm, I'm, same with you. Yeah, I'm on the same with you. Yeah, it's, it's, the $3.5 million grant is, is huge and that's something that.
Again, it goes without saying, but they don't think, these prices aren't going to go down. You know, we lose the grant.
No.
So as part of the grant, we would have to have everything, the infrastructure in place by the end of June 2026. So that's the timeframe working is to, to take advantage of it.
If it, if it was in an area that wasn't solely reliant upon a specific property being developed in a certain way and there were multiple businesses that were driving the need for it, I would probably be more compelled. But we're relying on a lot of if, if, ifs, and remediation hasn't even started yet, not the big if, right? And if remediation turns up something not too good, they could walk away. And, and that's true, they're going through steps to try to insulate themselves from liability in those circumstances. Those are my concerns.
Yeah, see, everybody says you and I disagree on a lot, but we really don't. I mean, I, I'm with you in a solid percent, not really. You know, and my, my other concern is, I mean, the elephant in the room, the sewer project on West Main Street cost a heck ton more than originally presented. So that, that's my concern, is that it's going to come back to town meeting for another $600,000, $750,000, $800,000, which is what happened with the other project. So that being said, I mean, go ahead.
And I'm just looking at, just to make sure I understand this, that with the betterment and the tie-in, if I just live in my house and because we're going to try to develop that piece of property, it's going to cost me $22,000.
Yeah, that's a, it is, I mean, so yes.
That's not including, that's not including you having a contractor come out and actually tie you in, but that's.
No, no, that doesn't, that's a, that's a tie-in and a betterment fee. But if I'm just sitting in my house.
That's a whole other thing.
Twenty-two thousand dollars.
I'm just going to, yeah, I mean, the trade-off is when you go to sell. So, you know, septic systems definitely have a limited life. They're not permanent. They will fail. I don't know when, but, you know, nobody knows for sure when, but, and it is typical at the sale of a house that they do. And as we said, the costs are going to be more to replace a septic system. That's, that's the benefit. I mean, it does, you know, it, it does provide value to the property to have the ability to tie into the sewer and then if and when you do tie in, it's significantly cheaper than having to replace your septic system.
So for me personally, I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm on the fence on this one. I, I mean, I, I think it's, I think it would be good to put it to the town to vote on it, just see what they think. But the last thing I want to see is anybody assessed out of their home. And that's kind of what I see, exactly what Denise was saying. Even if it's one person, that's, that's one too many in my opinion, but, good.
So Steve, hold me up if I'm saying something that won't work. I just want to make sure that the grant money would still be there if we pulled this off, if the select board voted to take this off the warrant. The warrant hasn't been posted yet. So if they voted to take this off the warrant, that would give more time for DevCo and Credinale
Absolutely.
to come and still get forward and wait until the fall and then maybe they come to an agreement if we go back. If we wait till October, is the grant money still there?
So yes, the, if you're starting to jeopardize the end, the end, yes. So we talked with the granting agency yesterday. Paul was on the call with the, because we did want to understand that. So the way we have it now is if we get the vote, if we were to get the vote now, we would be ready to start in the fall. We anticipated taking about a year to complete, maybe a little more. So by the end of 2005, we anticipate completion. If we move it, if we vote it in the fall, we're not starting. If we move it, if we vote it in the fall, we're not starting till the spring, most likely. A year from the spring is the spring of 2026. So it's, it's tight to the end, but it's still within the numbers. And, and I get, I mean, I, you know, we were getting all the, the feedback, you know, we felt like we got a good jump on it and we were giving information out, but now everything's happening fast and it's, it's, um, a lot of people seem to have concerns, I get that. We're just presenting the information. You know, I guess the question would be what's gonna make it more powerful? So that, that, the first thing that Mike said is the biggest thing is we get an answer that, yeah, the developer's on board, yeah, we're ready to pay 1.5 million in an assessment, we're, we're signing on and taking the property. Does that do it? Or we still have all the other concerns?
For, for me personally, if, if Devco had signed contract right now saying they're gonna take it over, I, I would be more leaning towards it, yeah, but...
Yeah, and I wanna see a timeline to the project here, like, I understand.
Yeah, I just, you know, I'm, I've never been a fan in my entire, you know, what, five years in the public service, I've never been a fan of, of making these decisions based on a potential, you know, property, property being developed. I, I'm not, I don't think it's, I don't think it's smart business. I think if Devco pulls out, we're on the hook for what, $130,000 a year on top of everything else, and these people are gonna be assessed for it anyways, and we're in the middle of a, of an override crunch here and we have no money. It's just, to me, it's fiscally irresponsible to do that without a, without a commitment from Devco, but that's, that's my personal opinion.
I will say from my, from my time on the economic development, I mean, there's a huge need for this kind of development where the businesses are, right? But this is like one apartment place versus the corridors of 123 and 140, which we have business focus, which is probably, we need it much more than...
Devco's presentation was, was one of my last planning board meetings when I was on the planning board, and I, I thought it was fantastic. I was all for it, 100% in for it.
Yeah.
You know, flash forward two and a half years later and there's still no, nothing signed, you know, nothing...
No commitment.
No commitment, exactly. So that, that's a concern for me.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, good.
So what we're really talking about here is sort of like a game of chicken, right? So we can wait until Octo, we can wait till October and see what happens with Devco, okay? But if nothing happens with Devco between now and October, we'll be right back having this same conversation.
Right.
And we'll be having this same conversation now under a time crunch of having to get it done before '26, basically, or sometime in '26. So my concern is that I don't wanna lose sight of what a problem that property is. In other words, you know, yes, I understand, I understand the betterment cost, I understand the tie-in cost. I understand people don't wanna pay more for something that they're not choosing to do necessarily. But that property is a huge liability for this town. And we, if we miss the opportunity to do something about that property, you know, I think that, that's weighing heavily on, on how I'm thinking about it. So, you know, so, you know, that's, that's kind of where I am, is that I, I, I don't wanna be here five years from now and, you know, 10 homeowners have replaced their septic tanks for $40,000 or $30,000 each, and we still have a dilapidated, contaminated property on our hands. So that, and we don't have $3.5 million of grant money to help remediate that property. So I'm not saying the answer is easy. Part of, part of this job that we do on the select board here is we have to make difficult, difficult decisions and sometimes they're not always, um, sometimes it's a lesser, I don't wanna say lesser of two evils, but sometimes it's a lesser of two evils in trying to figure out, you know, what we're trying to do for the tent, for the people who live over there, but also for the rest of the town as well.
I understand, but I don't think it's a liability for us yet, but we don't have possession of the land. Town doesn't own that, right? If we took possession of it, we'd have a liability. But as it stands today, I don't think we have one.
And what...
Is it, I saw, yes. Is chicken and egg thing, yes. They think Devco will also say, I won't do, I won't sign anything until I know that it's gonna be there, right? So I think, you're right.
Yeah, I just feel like the very presence of that property in our town is, is a, is a li, is a liability for the town. It does not do anything for us, it can only hurt us.
My only point would be that we could say to your point, Mr. Steiner, that yes, it would definitely improve that whole area, but we could still be sitting here with that property looking just like that and those people having to pay all that money anyway.
And the town...
Right, right. And that, sorry, thank you, thank you, Mr. Marson, because that's, that's what I was saying, that's where I was going with the, the game of chicken thing.
Right. I'm not comfortable playing chicken with other people's property and livelihood and possibly not even being able to live in this town.
I mean, I think, Sam, sorry, Mr. Chair, I think, I think our best option here is putting it off till the fall and seeing if we can get this, see if we can get Devco and, and the developer.
Is, are they the only developer that we're...
There was Devco in that other one, there was another one, I believe. I don't know if it was made public yet, but I know there was another one, but, but even then, I mean, like I said, it's going back two and a half years now. It's, you know, and, and, you know, again, as much as, as I believe these numbers, I wanna believe that they're gonna stay that way, I don't believe they're gonna, I believe they're gonna go up anyways. So that, that's another concern I find, so.
That's something, yeah. It's unfortunate that we live with that, right?
It happens.
No, that question comes every time.
Yeah.
I walked off the football field with my tail between my legs. I'll never forget that.
I was probably one of them.
I'll be there again. I mean, you can, I, I will tell you that if nothing else, you know, there were a lot of things learned from that. Everything that could go wrong did go wrong. The biggest part of it, you know, we've talked a lot about the ledge, the biggest part of it was being out on the state highway and, you know, as we ran into the ledge, we had to deal with it, and we had a contractor that struggled to deal with it, and then a state that wouldn't allow us to blast or hammer it. I'm making excuses, listen to me. But, but I take this and every, and I get it, I, I get it. I hate, I hate to think that future sewer projects are gonna continue to get shot down because of, because of what happened. So I, I feel bad about that, but I am telling you that we've done more to gather the information we need this time. We spent more during the design on the last job. We did, we followed state standards as far as the spacing of bearings, getting information. We did three times that on this project to get our data. We're not on the state highway, so, and I'll probably, you regret saying it, but we're very comfortable with the cost range we've given you, but...
So I, I wanna make, I wanna make clear, I, I didn't wanna say that you didn't do the diligence and that this isn't, you know, your best effort for the fill rate pricing. I'm just saying that...
It's a valid concern.
Me personally...
It's construction.
It just wasn't meant to be, it's not authorized.
It's construction and it's unpredictable.
And, and I'm, I'm in property management, so I understand that things can domino and that, and that happens all the time. But when we're talking about, you know, and, and I have heard from some homeowners in the area that, that really would lose their homes over this and it's rolling the dice.
And I guess, I do have to, and I know that, so that was the, the residents, the public meeting we had with the Elm Street residents staff, I think we had a really good meeting and it was productive and we heard their concerns and we get it. You know, I kinda laid out to you that this is how everybody does it. This is how it happens. And I do struggle with trying to explain why it's okay that they get assessed that. But the people that aren't, there are, there are two systems that are in failure and have been put on hold that are looking at it. Significant sum of money to replace their systems out there. So they're, they're praying it goes through. So for the people, you know, you've got these people that don't want it to happen and it's all based on your circumstances, and I get that. The other thing I wanna ask is, I totally get putting it off, let's get some more information about 47. I would ask if there be some collaboration, if, if people are unhappy with the, and I think with the Finance Committee, the Select Board, the Water and Sewer Board, let's have a work session about the betterments and what our options are to do with those. If, if you all like the number, we need some help. We're working with what we have, you know, and the requirement to tie in is the requirement to tie in. If town meeting wants to waive it, it's gonna make it harder, the sewer rates are gonna go through the line. So those are the things that we'll work against, this is any sewer project, not just this sewer project. So I would just, I don't wanna come back in the fall and have Devco on board and then have everybody still say, yeah, but it's too... You know, if we still can't come to an accord on that, then why?
Thank you very much. Oh, you caught it.
Steve, I'll call you.
Hi, I'm Stephen Bernstein. I'm your water commissioner, if you don't know, and I live at 18 Nolan Street in Norton, Massachusetts. On behalf of the water commissioners, we'd like to withdraw Article 10 for this town meeting and we would like to put it on the fall special town meeting, uh, fall meeting.
Oh, well, that was easy.
Yeah, why didn't you come up with...
Yeah.
They wanted, you wanted to have an opportunity to sit for a while, yeah.
My wife's like, why you still at the meeting?
The other thing is, just to emphasize what Steve said, our consultant is, we spoke to the Masquerade, Masquerade Grant People yesterday. They told us this is a $3.5 million grant. It's the largest grant ever given in this program and based on the state budget, our budget, probably not gonna happen again for a very, very long time. Be a real disappointment if we lose the grant and I, and probably if we lose the grant, we'll never see sewer on Elm Street. Thank you very much.
So to his point, yeah, I, I think that it was fantastic getting that grant and it's, it's insane to be able to, to have to lose that, but I think having, having Devco committed would be, again, for, I'm just speaking for myself and for a few people I've spoken to, that it would bring them from a no to a yes. All right, so I guess if they're gonna pull that, do we...
I'll make a motion to remove, huh? Remove Article 10 from the annual...
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of removing Article 10 from the warrant?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. If we could move now to Article 13, Establishment of Townwide Speed Limits. I think we have someone here from the State Committee, I don't know who one of them is.
We do.
Is he ready? And you show up, you know, with a microphone.
What are we talking about? Congress Safety Committee, they've been having some discussions, a lot of discussions with those stakeholders all over town. And we know that this article, the Senate passed here, failed, and we believed it a large, I think based on the fact that they didn't understand it. The voters didn't quite understand what that's all about. But this article does allow supporters, selectmen to monitor and control select speeds on how many roads only, that not include any of the state highways, which would be, you know, anything with a number on it, 123 or 140. It only can, only allows us to control all the streets. We have a lot of customer complaints, we have a lot of complaints from local citizens about the speeds on their streets. My, my street, my street is 30 miles per hour, nobody gets 30 miles per hour, other than maybe Steve.
I do.
Anyone else is doing 30, 40, 50, 60 miles per hour down the street. And I think mainly because it's a straightaway, you can almost see half a mile in front of it. But we're hoping that the, the, we consider, we support it the last time, we're hoping to do it again this time because it will give the selectors some control over some on the streets and an example to grow. Right now, Reservoir Street, 30 miles per hour. We can't go any lower than that. If the select board decide they wanna go 25 miles per hour, they can do that. And under the President laws, you can't do that. If we wanted to drop the speed limit from 30 to 25 without the bylaw, we would have to do a fracas study, we'd have to spend the money on engineers and everyone else that goes along with it. And it costs a lot of money to do something like that. We've got a couple of other projects in town we're working on, we're trying to reduce the speed. Still, East Main Street is a major problem, concern of ours. You can go from 31, 30 miles per hour on one way and 40 to the other, it doesn't make sense. It doesn't state well, so that falls under different, under different jurisdictions, so. Anyway, the reason for the request again is to try to get some control of some of the speed limits on town-owned streets, so. Yeah, the general, the general consensus.
All right, so I think one of the questions before was, how many people's concerned with it, it's gonna make every street $25 an hour and that's not the case?
No, it's not true. You take a street by street. Yeah, there are towns, cities and towns that now have city of town life, speed limits.
Yeah, it just gives us, the select board the authority to, to bring it down to 25.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair. Is there any evidence that just putting a different sign slows people down?
I think he's talked to... I don't really know, I don't think so.
Enforcement, enforcement is...
Yeah, it's mostly, mostly the enforcement, but at the same time, if I'm driving along and I see this 30 mile per hour sign, I know I'm doing 35 anyway. I'm, I'm, I'm paying somewhat of attention to it and if it's 25, I know, I get away at 30 miles per hour. People don't do the speed limits, it's just, you know, it's the way we are.
I don't hope to keep the honest people honest.
Mr. Chair.
I did the speed limit.
And I think this, this originally came up because of the truck traffic on Worcester Street over by Home Market Foods, you know, and I think the ability to be able to enforce a lower speed limit over there for the truck, truckers would be, would be really helpful for that, for that neighborhood side.
We've been having a lot of conversations with DOT and anyone else we can about some of the issues, like, you know, my son must be struggling. And it's interesting to find out what we can and cannot do. A lot of people think we can do a lot, but really can't do much, maybe unless we get permission.
I think, I think some of the votes are thickly settled. I don't think that hurts the consent, right?
Um, it might be.
Yeah. I mean, the other thing is I think it came up as...
But it also says, or, or on any way in Norton that is not a state highway, is that only if it's thickly settled or business district?
Yeah. And so, there's another thing that came up, as we even raised this while I know Mike, what she was saying, that the East Main Street is not a state highway. Look at the DOT map, it looks like it clearly is a state highway, so I'm curious where you, where you got the information it's not a state highway.
From DOT when we did the...
The map shows it, map shows it the same color straight through from Adam Ward East End.
Yeah, we talked to DOT too, it's, it's not, it's owned by the town.
East town, Conover.
East Main, yes.
Well, they need to take their map.
It was, it's just, it's a state road, but it's not, but that portion is...
State numbered, yeah.
Yeah, it's state numbered, but it's not, that portion is actually owned and maintained by the town. It's, it's religious, I understand.
Right.
Change it.
I wanna go back to your thickly settled thing. Who determines whether or not an area is thickly settled?
Do you define anywhere?
It is. I don't have, I have it in front of me, but the state has a definition, thickly settled, it's so many...
Perfect square, yar, eight mile...
So many, yeah, so many, yeah.
Yeah, you can't have...
It's always a definition, come on.
I know, I know. We have, we have, I know we have.
But recently, you had this traffic guy, you know, that takes, well, that is definitely traffic.
Definitely traffic.
And around, number one.
So is there a motion on this?
I will make a motion to, thanks.
Thank you, love.
I will make a motion to recommend Article 13 on the annual town meeting warrant.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Oh, that's...
I, I really thought I heard you say that, so I'm sorry.
It's okay.
4-1?
4-1, yeah.
Okay. I guess we continue going down. Bylaw amendment, the homeowner privacy bylaw amendment, this was the petition article and I, I know Stella was to meet with you on this. And the Finance Committee voted no action on the article. And they, they had a good, good point on this. This is a bylaw, not a zoning amendment, so Planning Board doesn't make a recommendation And the finance committee voted no action on the article. And they, they had a good, good point on this, this is a bylaw, not a zoning amendment, so the planning board doesn't make a recommendation on bylaw articles. What the finance committee's suggestion was move no action and that we reach out to Stella and if she would come to the select board, maybe if she'd come to the select board in October, for the October town meeting, and ask, meet with the select board and talk about what she's trying to do, and try and have the select board do it as a bylaw amendment, then you could have town council review it, where they can't do it now as a petition article, they can't have a lot of involvement with it. That way, the town council could be more involved and say, well, this would work, this might work, and so.
Good question. If the petition article, let's say, if it was passed, town council would have to review it at that point, or the state would have to review it, need to approve it, pass it, and so if it's not working properly, it's not going to.
Right.
Okay.
And, I mean, some of the concern now, I know talking with the building commissioner, who's the zoning enforcement officer, and talking with the police chief, is how is this enforceable, they're not sure. The concern is that this is more of a civil matter that should be handled by the courts, and then they really would want town council to get involved and figure out where there's some enforcement capability for the town, or is this just bringing us into a civil matter?
Mr. Chair. I think this is just a very slippery slope for us to step on right now.
So, I'm open for a motion?
I'll make a motion. I will make a motion to recommend no action.
Second.
On Article 18 on the annual town meeting warrant.
Second. Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Again, zoning article, the number, Article 19 zoning bylaw amendment, this did go to the planning board, oh, Paul's still here, no.
He left.
This, and they came back with their recommendation opposed to this article. Mr. Chairman? The FICCO voted a loving nothing not to recommend.
Oh, I know you're a secretary.
Can I make a motion?
Absolutely.
Um, to, um, to make a motion to recommend, do we recommend no action on this?
Not to recommend.
Not to recommend, okay, we'll make a, I want to make the, make a motion not to recommend Article 19 on the annual town mark, meeting warrant, seeing as the planning board. Second.
Mr. General, second.
Um, just before we vote on it, I just want to let you know that I went out to this property, spoke with their, and looked at the situation, and they have the situation now, but I don't think that anything that we're going to do is going to help them with that situation. I think they need to take care of it simply.
Yeah.
I agree.
All right, motion is second to recommend no action on Article 19, all in favor?
I, I. I thought it was not to recommend, not to.
Oh, correct.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, not to recommend, okay. Article 19, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, we have one more, right?
So, capital. You have the capital plan in your packet and also a sheet on capital funding. So, beginning balance was $512,527, and what capital is recommending for highway, just three payments, this is on existing equipment that they're already making payments on. So, their Peterbilt, it would be year two of five for $50,000. Their John Deere utility tractor, payment five of five, $34,300, you like to see those five of fives. And the Peter, 2022 Peterbilt dump truck, year four of five, $28,150. And then data processing, replacement for end-of-life equipment, $25,000. Police department, they're purchasing new duty pistols for the department, $43,000. Fire department, structural firefighting hose, there's been a program they've been going through for a few years, going to replace the fire hose, $22,000. Norton Public Schools need to replace cylinder in the elevator at the JCS, $68,760. The recreation department, this is for some pool safety upgrades, equipment replacement at the ELP, $11,030. And then for the water at the sewer department, a Chevy Silverado dump truck, body to be installed, $50,000. A six-wheel Mack truck, $150,000. And a tow behind electronic sign, $20,625. And the sewer department, a Ford F-250, four-by-four visibility body, plow and accessory, $77,000. Tow behind electronic traffic warning sign, $20,625. And a six-wheel Mack granite dump, $51,500. And all water in sewer purchases will come out of water revenues for the water purchases and sewer revenue or retained earnings for those purchases. So, in the end, the total capital request was one, almost $2 million, $1,999,000. And capital improvement committee has recommended that the funds from capital, a total, let me get back, I lost the clue. So, the total expended out of capital improvements would be $282,240, $304,500 borrowed, water surplus, $149,125, and sewer surplus, excuse me, $149,125, and total water surplus, $220,625. And finance committee has recommended plan.
Mr. Chair. Yeah, just a clarification, so the recreation department also, did you mention that one?
Yeah.
That's the pool, is there a problem with the pool on her?
Yeah, so it's, the pool is zinking, so.
That's a problem.
That's a problem.
That is a pool problem.
She wants to cut down on that water bill, so.
Uh, Michael, can you clarify for me, the, the roof on the?
Yep, this is.
What portion is that?
This is the roof replacement on the brick portion of town hall that remains when the town hall is torn down, so that's where the fire department is, and they're just going to expand forward to that other brick section that.
So it's not part that's set for demo.
No. And so, like, if you're in the town hall with the veterans offices and the lunchroom and the bathrooms, that would all be part of the fire department.
That wall is where the, that building ends, is what you're saying.
Right, the block wall on that hallway is the end of that.
I'm assuming you're going to wait some demos, come on.
We, hopefully.
Before the project begins.
Um, the roofs are actually at two different elevations, so it won't, it won't be an issue. What we are working on is, like, through the green communities to get some funding to convert the entire building over to mini splits, so we can get the big AC unit off the roof before we do the roof and get rid of it, so. And the congressman actually stepped forward and we're on like a list, right, and a final list to get some funding for it, so.
All right, any other questions on that one?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Snyder.
I would like to make a motion to recommend the capital plan as written in Article 8 on the annual town meeting warrant.
Second. Yeah, motion is second, any further discussion on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right. And that's the last one we had to vote on, it was in the budget, right?
Yep, and you do have a special, I don't think they've put it down.
Prior year bills?
Yeah.
And the.
Um, prior year bills and culvert replacement are the only two that are actually moving forward. Article 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 are, oh, there's three articles moving forward, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7 are all no action, we just want to make a motion.
I'd be happy to do that. All right, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to recommend no action on Articles 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7 on the special town meeting warrant.
Second. All right, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
And Article 1 is a prior year legal bill, $10,649.85. I believe it was a bill from like March that got lost in the shuffle somewhere, and all of a sudden they alerted us, and how can we have paid this bill for March yet?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to recommend, uh, sorry, like to make a motion to recommend Article 1 on the special town meeting warrant.
Second. All right, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Excellent.
Article 8 is an article for special legislation to amend the charter, to provide for the appointment of the town manager.
Blah, blah, blah.
You know the language.
Yes.
And the finance committee voted to recommend.
Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve to recommend Article 8 for the special town meeting warrant.
Second. Motion is second, any discussion on this one? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
And the last article is Article 9, and you might not believe this, but due to all the rain and the storms we had this year, Jared has run into issues with Culbert.
Really? You're kidding.
And so, he, he, the finance committee approved $25,000 from free cash for his culvert replacement projects, including incidental and related costs.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to recommend Article 9 for the special town meeting warrant.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, opposed? So nothing else tonight, right? Oh, wait. All right. So now we're going to talk about the 2025 budget.
So, we had a little meeting last night at the finance committee. Zach, Zach.
He was just here. His leg's back.
He had a shock.
So, we had a meeting to 11:45.
11:45 PM, less than I was on the call.
Way to go, Peter. And so, the finance committee last night, they went through, they had already approved the 1% budget, and last night they went through and reviewed, and recommended a $4 million budget and recommended a 6.5, a budget with 6.5 override. The, so the budget recommended at, with $4 million, $4 million override was $76,193,911.11. And with the 6.5 million override was $78,520,369.92. And I do have the $4 million that I can go over with you if you want, but I will say, remind you that with an override of $4 million and an override of 6.5 million, it would create that there'd be no use of free cash, so the 1.2 million that we were using for free cash would not be used in the budget, that would be held, and so that could be used for, in the fall, that could be used for capital stabilization, OPEB. And also, with this $6.5 million budget, the ambulance receipt use was reduced from the $1 million to $850,000.
So maybe to get it started, we're going to discuss the 1% budget, I think it's been kind of discussed to death at this point, but. Do you have a, have a discussion or approve the 1% budget, or is it one of the last ones?
I'm, I'm fine to, to vote on the 1% budget, so.
Yeah, okay. Listen to, to.
Yeah, yeah, so, so would I make a motion?
Yeah, to approve the 1%.
Or do we weak to the, to approve the whole article?
You could make a motion on the 1%.
Okay, so we'll make a motion to recommend the 1% budget for the Article 6 for the annual town meeting.
Second. Motion is second for the 1% budget, recommend the 1% budget to your town meeting, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. So I know we have the 4 and the 6.5. Do we have somewhere in here the numbers, I remember asked from, to the break even, or the level services numbers for school, fire, PD?
So, with, with the $4 million budget, override budget, that brought all the town departments to level services, the only addition was one other person in the council on aging, $49,000 position. Other than that, it was voting the budgets back to what the requests were for level services.
Mr. Chair. Just for the town, right, not schools, whatever.
Is school, is that better for 1.5 short still?
So, this. On the $4 million.
That is in yellow, please.
I'm, I'm still trying to wrap my head around why we don't have this exact number. It's been months now, I don't understand.
I saw, I just remembered what it was.
No, for the weirdness of the schools, but I just, I mean. So I think we're doing a disservice to everybody by not having the exact number. That's my personal thought.
So, the exact number for the town, other than the $49,000, the $49,000 position to increase at the council on aging, is $16,452, $52,120.11. And for the schools, the number is $36,943,732. And their request.
Is that their original request?
Yeah. Their request was. Their request was
Mr. Chair? So that's 55, 325.
So that difference in the school from the recommended to the request on the $4 million is 1.92 difference? Do we have a number for what the level service is? So this 38 is, so a $4 million override is what the schools need for just level service? Is that what I'm understanding?
It's the 1.9 short of level services.
Right, so they were asking for 38, 873, 431?
But that's the number in the $4 million, that's not the number in the $4 million, that's their request.
So the $4 million awards them more than the 1%, but still less than the full level services.
So they're 1.9 short of level service, is what they're saying?
Yes.
So do we have a number for what level services across the board from schools and?
That's the 6.5 million budget.
Well, for the, for the town, I can tell you, level services.
I thought that was that 16,000, $16,452.
$120.11.
Right.
Level services would be minus $49,000 off of that, because that's another position being added to the CLA for $49,000.
And what's the level service number for schools?
The schools say, say that the number they submitted was level services.
So this 38 is what their level service number is?
Mr. Chair, Mike, on the 1% budget page, last page, grand total, FY 2025 department request, grand total, 78,575,769,25, that's level services of the departments, schools and town departments, right? 2024, the next, the column to the left of that, FY 24 budget appropriated, 71,451, 048.7 bridge, that leaves a delta of $7,124,720.52. That's the number, correct? The difference from '24, fiscal year '24
Correct.
To what the level service is to 2025.
Correct.
So it's a $7,124,720.52 dollar amount that would provide level services from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '25 for all departments.
Correct.
So why are we asking for a $4 million or $6.5 million override? That's the question I have. That's the number. Why are we asking for something short of that? We're going to be back here next year, two years from now.
So I think the scope of today's conversation, I have a discussion of amounts, right, we're just discussing how to pass the budgets.
I think, like, well, at the joint, that joint meeting, we had, we had $3 million, we had 3.5, we had 4, 4.5.
But we still didn't have the base number. I mean, that's, that, that to me is baffling that we still don't, we had to literally sit here and calculate this number up to what was needed. So I know we're talking about the four and the six and a half, but.
It could be.
I mean, anybody out here who wants to vote for an override, I understand the reasons why. I understand, 100% I understand the reasons why, but, but just throwing a number that could potentially pass is ridiculous, and throwing out a number that's not accurate is also ridiculous. We need to know exactly what, what is needed by the town, so we can say, hey, look, this is exactly what the police needs, this is exactly what five department needs, and everybody knows what the school needs. That number has not been out there yet, and it's been three months now we've been talking about this? I'm concerned, I'm very concerned.
I think the number is out there.
I just.
No, the school has had their.
The school has, you're right.
Has had their budget book out for quite some time. Mike got the numbers, these numbers just earlier this week, right, and he presented it to FinCom, so we've not seen the four and the six and a half, six and a half until today. But yeah.
Mr. Chair?
A pleasure.
I think it's unfortunate and unnecessary and almost misleading to be just throwing numbers out to the citizens, saying, hoping that there's a number out there that we're going to be able to pass. If we're, if we're going to be honest, let's be honest, and say, this is the amount of money to have level services, can you either go with that number or you don't go with that number? You're either in or you're out, is how I look at it. I don't understand why we're just trying to find a number that's palatable enough to the community that they might pass it. I don't understand that.
Mr. Chair? I guess I don't understand then why everyone is so concerned about their taxes going up. So in an attempt to not tax people out of their homes, now all of a sudden we don't want to give people the option
For a lower.
For a lower override. The idea that it doesn't make sense to propose something lower than all, than everything all in, and that's the only number, first of all, was exactly what we discussed at the, at the joint meeting. So I'm not sure why, why now it's this huge offense that no one's asking for $7.1 million dollars, but on the other hand, the idea behind the lower override amount was to stem, I don't think it's that difficult to understand. It's to stem some of the cuts, not all of them.
Correct.
And then to also try to address the fact that we don't want to tax people for the full $6.5 million or whatever, or the $7.1 or whatever it is. So I don't understand why now we suddenly don't care about how much people's taxes go up, and we're just saying, you know what, there's only one option, live or die with it. So I guess I'm confused as to, you know, why this, having a $4 million budget is, $4 million override is such an affront to everybody all of a sudden when it wasn't before, and the whole point of it is, is to try to find something that balances cuts with taxes. That's the whole idea. You're balancing the cuts with taxes.
So, so I mean, I can speak on my own on this one. I don't think anybody here said that they don't care about people's taxes going up. I think quite the opposite. I think from my own perspective, and you can, I said this at the joint meeting too, probably both joint meetings, we need to know the actual number. And just because you can pass something doesn't mean it's going to fix anything. We're going to, you know, people's taxes are going to go up with a $4 million override, and then next year, guess what? We're going to cut 100 teachers again, and we're going to, you know, and we're going to tell you you're a horrible person if you don't want to pay more taxes. It's going to happen again and again and again. So if we get that number, the actual correct number, and this is again, my opinion, we get the correct number, and we put it out there and say, hey, this is what we need. You want this community, this is what we need.
And I think this is the correct number, and then an alternative is a balance, the balance between the full amount number and then nothing with tons of cuts, right? So I think, I think we have the information in front of us, and of course, the budgets, as the years go on, and we keep having these personnel raises more than, more than whatever percentage we have, right, of course it's going to come up again. It is, it's just, it doesn't matter what number we pick at any point in time, because we go, so the $6.5 million was based on what we thought was level services at that time. It appears it was more than that now, but $6.5 million was what we were being told with the numbers from the school and town side. It seems like it's gone, gone a little bit up from that. Irrelevant. I don't think we need to change the numbers. I think that we settled at that joint meeting on the $6.5 million and the $4 million as a balance between the two.
All right, anyone else?
You know, how do we, how do we keep from happening the continued, you made this point at the last meeting or a couple of meetings ago, you know, the contract renewals and whatnot, negotiations, they cannot, they cannot be, you know.
Well, everyone's, everyone's guilty of that, I want to say that.
Oh, yeah.
Across the board. It's, it's the full contract rate, not just the annual increases. If we take everything into consideration, what is the full contract amount?
You know, that, that is part of the elephant in the room. We're overpromising, and we don't have, we're negotiating our money, but we don't have.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you. And so the balance is, and rightfully so, right, is if we try to keep everyone to what we have, we're going to lose good people. It's a balance. Town has to decide what we want to be, where we want to go, but I agree, we're playing with money that we don't have every time we're negotiating contracts, the way we do across all of the town, not any particular area, all of it.
So the reason that I wanted to put off the vote on the, on the town meeting is because I think with the two budgets, it's, it's super confusing for everybody. So I want to put it out there if the board wanted to do anything about that, and maybe just quote one. And that's why I wanted the specific numbers, because we could even narrow it down to, you know, to the penny, is what I was looking for. But I'll leave it up to the board.
I don't, I don't find it confusing myself, but I think the way we present it is going to make a difference in how people find it, right? How the article is discussed on the warrant, and how we vote on it, and this now, the meeting complex, complexities, right? All of that's going to be what makes it either smooth and easygoing or not.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, it's kind of goes back to the logistics discussion in a way, because we have to, we've had these discussions with the, with the three boards. We've, we've been down this road, we've all, we've gone, we've gone all the way down this road for two or three months to have these two, these two budgets. What I've been on was since the final meeting month. We've had all these discussions about the budget. I don't think we should be making decisions based on whether or not it might be confusing for some people at town meeting to understand it. I think we have to make a decision on what we think are the right, what's the right thing to do for our budget and for our situation that we're in, and then it's incumbent upon us, or the moderator, or whoever it is, to explain in a clear way what's going to happen at town meeting and on the ballot. I don't think saying, well, you know what, that, that $4 million budget, that, that, you know, that $4 million override, you know, that might be, that might be the one that, that, you know, that works, that works for this year, for whatever reasons, but then to say, but we won't present that to the people at town meeting because it might be confusing. Like, to me, that's not a good enough reason. You don't, you wouldn't run a company in a way that you would cater to, you know, the folks that, you know, don't understand something. You run a business to, you know, to, to, you know, let, let the people who, you know, understand it and take the time to understand it, make a decision on it. So to me, it just seems, it just seems awkward or odd to say, well, you know what, you know, some people might not understand. Well, you know what, we have town meeting, you know, if we didn't have town meeting, we'd have town council where everybody would have time to understand it. But we have town meeting, and if some people aren't, you know, we can guarantee that not all 2,000 people that show up at town meeting are going to understand it, but that doesn't mean that it might not be the right option for the town.
At any point, at any.
One second. So, so I'm glad you brought that up. You know, if you're running a business, you're not going to just throw it out there and say, you know, whatever's going to, whatever's going to work. And I don't want to, I don't want to pull anything because it's going to be confusing. That's just one aspect of it. The major point is, in running my business, I want to know exactly to the penny how much we need to stay level services. And just throwing out a number willy-nilly, which both of us are guilty of at the last meeting, because I think that threw out 6.5 and you threw out 4, I think we, I think honestly we both did a disservice to the town by doing that. I mean, I think we should have had to the penny exactly what was going to, what was going to be needed.
The 6.5 you based it on, I remember.
It was close, it was close.
What did the school need and what did the town need, and that's where 6.5 came from. The $4 million was a compromise unit to where it wasn't all or nothing, it was a compromise between losing some jobs but being able to do some level services.
We've, we've known since December or January what level services was. I mean, those were the department budgets that were submitted, but you were given the direction to now work on a $4 million, a 6.5 million. That's why we spent all our time doing it and went to Finance Committee and had them review that.
Yeah, and I know the, sorry.
Go ahead.
I know the Finance Committee went through every line item last night on both the $4 million override and the $6.5 million override, and I know they were able to actually make some reductions in those. You know, so, you know, I'm, I'm confident that FinCom has done its job, and he's.
I won't disagree with that.
And he's recommended.
There's no doubt that Yolton's work, trying to get those two budgets together.
Yeah, so, you know, I think, I think that's their, their, their job is to make the recommendations at town meeting, and so that's where we are.
So when Mr. Yunus said that we've had these numbers since December, I have never heard that number before, that 7.1 million was the amount that we would need to have level services. I haven't heard that before tonight.
That has been, like, I mean, what?
Sadly, it was under six.
It was, it wasn't, it wasn't the $7 million gap, it was the 78 million act.
And it was, it was under seven because we were using 1.2 million of free cash.
And the new growth, right?
Stabilization.
Yeah, but I'm saying if you took the 7.1 billion and had 1.2 million of free cash, that's.
Yeah, but did that include the new growth and increment as well?
Yeah, yeah, we are, we knew it that much.
I don't remember seeing that number at all. Not at all.
I do. And so, I mean, I think in the, in the earlier days, Mike was presenting, I don't know if it was that.
You even asked for that number.
I asked for the detailed budget, right? At the beginning, Mike was just presenting the full dollar amount at the bottom, that what I was asking for was this detail here that we now have, which we didn't have, right? But in the beginning, it was just buckets of school, town, personnel, whatever, the different categories that were.
Sure, yeah.
So it was just big, big buckets, but I wanted to see the detail, which is, which is what we now have, but the dollars, I think, were the same. I didn't bring all the over things, yeah, exactly, like that.
So, so FinCom, I, I tried to watch most of the meeting before I came here because it just came on, on line earlier. FinCom made adjustments to the 6.5 and the 4, or are they keeping it at 6.5 and 4?
They've made adjustments to those, so.
So just the specific numbers?
So, Mr. Chair, if I can.
Go ahead.
So the way I understood last night was, yes, they were able to make some reductions in their budget. The way this would work is they make their recommendations at town meeting, right, for the three budgets. And then after that occurs, whatever happens at town meeting, it would be up to the select board to decide the amounts that go on the ballot for the override. Is that correct?
Correct. So the FY '25, using the $4 million, the bottom line was $76,193,911.11. And using the 6.5 million, the bottom line was $78,520,369.92.
And that's using the full $4 million and full 6.5 million?
Mr. Chair?
I would just like to say that the amount of work that the FinCom has had to do in a short amount of time is unbelievable, and I appreciate the work that they have had to put in.
I don't envy them for having to.
I, I can't even imagine what that was like, so. I've watched as much of it as I could last night. I want to thank them for the effort.
Mr. Chair, just to piggyback on that, you know, we put a lot of pressure on everybody to get these numbers out there and get these numbers done, and it's whether it's the staff at the town hall, or, you know, Mike's team, or whatever, everybody. everybody has really hustled to put a lot of this together. So we appreciate it to them and to FinCom, obviously, as well.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's easy for us to sit here and say, hey, take care of this, just get it done. And then, you know, behind the scenes, it's ridiculous. So, yeah, I very much appreciate it.
I'm not here for this discussion tonight, I'm here for something else. And I will tell you, with a member who has experience of all the overrides, which is ability of so many, a lot of people involved, it gets to be very confusing when you're, when you're looking at one number. You're going up and you're talking about one number that you're looking for an override. In this case, we're looking at two plus the balance. And, you know, to me, it just makes it a bit more difficult to, to sell because we're talking about town meetings earlier. I will tell you that it takes two or three hours to sign people in. You can do it on a Saturday, and you can be back another day or two beyond it. Because just the way, the manner, you know, the 2,000 people or more showing up should be very difficult. And I would assume the procedure would be 6.5 million budget, with budget plus 6.5 million. This is how much we need. That would have to be number one on the discussion on town meeting four. Because if that fails, then you'd go down to the 4 million dollars. If that fails, then you'd go down to the 1% increase. So that's, that's three stages of it. When you're doing a ballot question, let's say you do the ballot question first before you do the, actually go to town meeting. It does decrease the amount of people that will show up, it's on the ballot. But again, what happens is, on the ballot question, you've got two questions really. Do you want override of 4 million or 6.5 million? The balance 1% is a whole different story. We, we have to go back to town meeting after the vote, and we have to talk and discuss the 1% increase. We hope there's no way around it. And Mike, I mentioned, I heard a couple of things earlier, you were in the room. Now, we still require to notify school teachers, school personnel by January, June 50.
She, they are, but she already notified them.
They were notified last Friday.
I think so, yeah.
And the beginning of fiscal year, July 1st.
Yes.
We have to have a budget in place by July 1st.
Yes.
We don't have a lot of time. Just letting you know, there's not a lot of time to discuss this. And if you go to a town meeting, pull a ballot first, we are going to be there a long time. You know, a lot of people are going to be asking a lot of questions. The Zoom issue probably goes out the window, because if you're on Zoom, you can't come and hear a vote, you know? And I remember on a net exclusion in 11, 2011, we were there, we were there for nine and a half, two hours, just to ballot vote. And we didn't start until two hours after it started. So in effort to clean this up a bit at the 11 and a half and three quarter hour, you almost have to consider going to a ballot first and then going to a town meeting to decide maybe which you're going to spend 6.5 million for, or 4 million, or the 1%. I don't know how you can do it any other way. If you try to go through a town meeting now, this late at night, with three different scenarios, I don't want to be, I don't want to be an assistant moderator, I can tell you that, because the room is going to be angry, a lot of people is going to be getting charged up over it. And if we started on 10 o'clock on Saturday morning, it would take till noon time for the people to sign in and ready to go. So you kiss the first two hours goodbye, in any, any scenario, that's going to happen. I remember one town meeting way back, in the late 90s, early, early 2000s, and we had about 2,300 people throw up. And it was the craziest thing I ever saw. People were coming, we were hearing voices over the intercom, people were asking questions. Couldn't, couldn't see or understand what they were. You know, it was, and it was, and we heard a lot about people getting riled up and nasty, just downright nasty, because it was taking, the process was taking very, a very long time. And I think you can understand the frustration when that happens, so. But I just wanted to kind of clear a couple of things up, that we do have to have a budget in place by July first, no matter what. I heard that earlier, and I just wanted to make sure you were very much aware.
So either way, we'd have to have a special election before then anyways, we'd have to set that up.
And by the way, the Attorney General has to approve it before it's a package.
Well, thanks for that. Thank you.
And I just wanted to mention, General being my witness on it, I think we're driving Michelle crazy. Every time we change a number, there's so many things that change, because this, you know, everything in the budget is fixed and shared, you've got the water and sort and direction. Every time you change numbers, every, so, for, for her to be working on three different budgets at the same time, it's been amazing.
All right, I think we have a couple more people that want to say something, so just if you want to limit it to the budget stuff.
I'll limit it to just a couple minutes. It goes like this. You're going to lose, because people like me are going to come out and say, no, this is not a world's fair. You're not acting like you're running, not you. The entire town is not running a $70 million company like you. You're going to go bankrupt like Reardon Barton. I'm standing here knowing full well that the green signs will be on the lawn, saying vote no, because that's what it should be. When you make a wrong turn and you put it into your GPS and you miss the turn, that voice says, "Recalculate." That's what you should be doing. This is the year to pay the piper. This is the year to recalculate. Yes, people could lose their jobs. But if you don't recalculate, this is not going to be a friendly town to move to, because nobody's got any money. And everybody's overlooking that point. My three minutes are up. Nobody's got any money.
Thank you, Ralph. I think Zach and Cody, Cody is going to have to.
First person.
Cody, Tom, 3rd, Keep Drive. I'm on the finance committee. I appreciate the kind words and encouraging words that have been spoken here tonight in, in recognition of the very tough work that we have undertaken over the past few months. A couple of things. I think the 1% budget is the bare minimum, it has to be passed. I don't view this as a deductive thing, like Mr. Kimball suggested, starting at 6.5 and working backwards. We have to fund the 1%. It's the only, it's the only option, where we face a shutdown. So we have to fund that. Then it becomes additive. The 4 million was used as a base number. Mr. Yunus put together a $4 million plus 1% budget. We went through that, we pared it down. I think even in that 4, 4 million, there was a surplus built into it, and we shaved another 170,000 off of it last night. So it's not 4 million. Whatever that number is, you don't have to put a 4 million override, and it's just a nice round number. Within the 4 million, you have, you have saved all of the police jobs, the 1% cuts with me, you've saved all of the fire jobs, and you've saved a lot of the school jobs. There's still massive cuts being made at the schools. So that's where the 6.5 comes in. 6.5 gets us to level services for the school, level services for council and aging, level services, that, that's your level services budget, is the 6.5. It's not 6.5 million, it's like 6.3, something in there. So when you're looking at it, look at it as the 6.5 quote unquote option is your level services budget. The 4 million is, we can't afford it, but we don't want to lose Chartley, we don't want to shut down the police station. So can we afford 4 million? Yes or no? So you're, you're literally starting at, the worst case scenario is 1%, and here are all the cuts. Can you afford 4 million? Yes or no? That gets you XYZ back. Can you afford a little bit more on top of that? That gets you level services for the entire town. That's, that's, that's the way that I view it, and that's the way, when we went through it last night, we made sure to maintain fiscal responsibility on that. That gets you to the point where, when you're talking about it, we're not using free cash, which is non-recurring revenues, you eliminate that from the structure. Now you have a buffer built in, but you have to stay fiscally conservative. You have to stay responsible with the money that you were collecting from taxes. No more 5% raises across the board. Cut it. We shouldn't be talking about that whenever, like, you're, you're only allowed to raise 2.5% by Prop 2.5. So the numbers have to add up. You either have to grow, and you have to, you know, have a larger tax base because you've got more commercial, or you've got more, a lot of real estate taxes coming in, or you have to maintain a very, very conservative budget where you are not raising it more than 2.5%. So that's, like, if, when you're saying that, like, the numbers, the numbers that the FinCom went through, you very quickly approved the 1% because you trusted us, that we did the job. The 4%, we did the job. It's additive. It's not deductive, it's additive. We're not starting and saying, give us 6.5 and we'll figure out where, where to put it. We actually, we actually took, we took money out of the, the 6.5 because Mike even admitted, I couldn't find a place to put it. Added the budgets. Cut it. It's done. How many times did I say, cut the fluff? Like 50, yeah. Three times, cut it. We shouldn't be spending just because we collect the money. We should be looking at, what do we need? And only spend what we need. And then maintain that budget very conservatively across year to year.
And I do. I think Zach, you'd like to say something.
It would ruin your evening if I didn't say anything, right? Zach, tell us 3 Richmond Drive. I'm just going to make it kind of short and sweet, have my opinion on the whole thing as a private citizen, not as, not speaking for FinCom, not speaking for anybody. FinCom's giving you a bunch of numbers, we've worked 100 hours, I think Cody says it's 35, but whatever it is, it feels like, my body feels like it's been 100 hours. I just think, in my personal opinion, that the wheel has come off the cart with all this. I mean, I talked to my neighbors, I talked to the residents, you know, I said it last night in the meeting, somebody stopped me a couple of times, we tried to get gas, a half an hour later, I'm still talking to them. How many meetings, Cody, again? 15 later, whatever it was? I still don't understand personally how a three, a three option ballot vote calculates. I don't think the town manager does either. Okay, it doesn't make any sense, but that's neither here nor there. To win an election, you have to have a clear message, a clear direction, not maybe this, maybe this. My neighbor's telling me, well, if you can get my 4 million, why would I give you 6.5? Right? I mean, I'm not going to hide with a number. I'm going to leave the number for you guys, the elected officials, to come up with, because my number would never agree with any of your numbers. So I'll leave it at that. But I would, I would suggest to have an orderly system, a clear message, come up with one number, put that on the ballot first, as the town manager recommended, so we don't have the circus of this going to be town meeting. I don't know why, I still don't understand why we want to go to town meeting. You've got 2,000 people at town meeting and 15,000 people voting. Put it to the vote first. If the people decide whatever your number, you guys agreed to, then we can have that debate at town meeting and say, okay, you know, you want to allocate to what, whatever you want to do. But we're creating a monster that doesn't need to be created. And we're making things complicated that don't need to be complicated. You guys decide what the number is, put it to a vote, the people want it, fine, then we can go to town meeting and sort, sort that out. That's just my personal view. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Zach. All right, we have one more.
Hi, I'm not trying to start shit tonight.
Watch the light.
I'm saying this because there's a lot of conversation about the override and everything, and some of you have seen, and hopefully there are people watching online, and hopefully a lot of people are going to watch this because of this whole conversation. The sign I've been holding all week is because I'm hoping that we don't just get 2,000 people for that vote, we don't get a 100-person town meeting. If all of this goes in a weird way, and overrides aren't on the table or anything like that, this is just me making an appeal to a lot of people to please start paying attention to this stuff, not just when it's about a huge override like this, because that's kind of how we are here. And I grew up going to very large town meetings in my hometown down the street, and I just really want people to purchase it tomorrow, so, sorry.
Thank you, Ralph. So, yes, thank you.
Chair, can I just give some information? Thank you.
Come on, go.
As I believe the only person in the history of the town of Norton who's ever presided over a town meeting of more than 1,500 people, I can tell you that, yes, it's very difficult and very time-consuming, and my personal opinion is there has not been nearly enough planning thus far to, to do it. But this is the form of government that we have chosen. This is what we're, we're supposed to do. I, you guys actually dragged me away from the hockey game, I was sitting there, and I won't give the score. We have no idea how, honestly, it wasn't any score, it's all got up apart alive. But, yeah. The way the article would work is, of course, largely up to how it's moved and how the override goes. The idea that it would be too confusing or too difficult, I've seen single-budget articles in town meetings in the past go three nights. I've seen last year, the biggest budget in the history of town of Norton, go with absolutely no questions. So, you know, the idea that it's, that it's difficult is not, the way I would picture it going, and I'm not the moderator and I don't have any final say in it, the way I would picture it going is the FinCom would move, here is the 1% budget, that's the fallback budget, and, but here are the contingency budgets that you named, or whatever amounts you named, and they would only take place if an override, you know, passes and be, and it would be contingent upon that. So that, would it be confusing? Yes. Would it be difficult to explain? Yes. Nobody ever said town meeting was supposed to be easy. Nobody ever guaranteed anybody that, that it's supposed to be easy. Basically, now you have two choices. Give the people a choice, or don't give the people a choice. I don't, I, I don't know, you guys would know better than I do, people, so I'm not guys. You people would, would know better than I would what the timeframe is and whether you can do it, but, yeah, I think it was mentioned by somebody here that you have to have a budget by, by July 1st. And that budget can be a default budget, an override can happen after and be added to the budget, but I get very sensitive. I've, I've run those meetings, I can tell you that the main goal of a town meeting attendee is to go home. Okay? That is the major objective of almost every person who comes to town.
95%.
Yeah, and they say, they want to go home. And when you have a meeting, I think, I think I heard Mr. Kimball before talking about how it might take a long time to check in. Yeah, I had to delay town meeting for people to check in, because I would not stop the town meeting if somebody had been there on time and was denied access. I don't think it's legal to run a town meeting unless you, unless you give them access. So, and when, when that happens, believe me, people don't get mad at you guys right then that night, you people, they get mad at the moderator. So I wouldn't want to be jacked if he's, if he's sitting there. But a lack of planning, my opinion, is not reason to deny people the choice. This is the government they signed up, that within the last few years, they voted to keep, that this is what... that this is what the legislative body does. If we don't give the budget process to the legislative body that's in charge of it, then what is effectively happening is you are substituting your judgment for their judgment. That is not right, that is not the way the system should work, and we should not be protecting town meeting. Town meeting is a big boy, or girl, I'm not sure which, I never looked. It needs to stand on its own. And when we all start thinking that we're smarter than the town meeting, then we are in trouble. We are defeating the government that we put forth, that has governed Norton for over 300 years. If we're going to keep it, give the people the choice. Are we unprepared for it? Yeah, and you don't know. You don't know whether you're going to get 500 people or 5,000 people. I mean, 5,000 is a reach. If I had to guess, I would guess that you're going to get 1,500 to 2,000 people. And you need to, you need to prepare for that, whether you postpone or no matter what you do, you definitely need to prepare from, when we did it with the town clerk, we worked on parking shuttle buses to and from places, we had to work with the cable, Norton Cable was fantastic and paid for people to wire the rooms for sound, because you have to guarantee that everybody who's at the meeting has access to sound, to hear it and to see it, and that they can be recognized to speak. If you deny one person the right to speak at town meeting, then the moderator really has no choice and has to stop, you know, has to stop meeting. But, I, the reason I jumped in my car and left the Bruins game.
And what was the score again?
1-0.
1-0 Maple Leaf. I, yeah, I will tell you. But, yeah, the reason I left is because I started hearing that we can't, we can't give this to town meeting, it'll be, it'll be a mess. Government's not supposed to be neat. It, you know, give the people what they ask for. Give them a choice, give them the ability. The, the idea that we have to have an exact number, what people are trying to do is, as somebody said, they're trying to balance what they believe the town needs and what they believe the town can afford, which is what you folks are trying to do. You're trying to come up with something between the real need, whichever, nobody agrees on exactly what the real need is, but everybody agrees there is one, and then what we can afford. The only way the townspeople get to make that choice is if you give it to them. If you deny them the choice, again, you substitute your judgment for theirs. I came tonight as a, as a Simpson, as a former moderator, as, you know, a former selectman, because that's what we were, you know, back in, when dinosaurs were on the earth. It's, it's at the very basis of what we are as a community. It's at the very basis of what we are as a town. So, please, whatever the town votes, whatever the town meeting votes and then subsequently on the ballot, if there's, if there's an override, everyone's going to live it. Everyone's going to do it because we did it as a town. Let us do it as a town. Don't stop town meeting because it's messy, because frankly, if you wait for town meeting to be neat and clean and orderly, you're going to be waiting one heck of a long time.
All right, thank you, Bill. So, I just want to just jump on one thing that you said, and I'm sorry you left the Bruins game for that. I don't think anybody here was considering pulling the vote away from town meeting or from the citizens at all. I mean, personally, I would never take that away from the citizens, so, I think you were a little misinformed.
I think you're saying by changing the budget, right?
No, you said give the vote to the people, and that's what we did. That's what I intended to do. All right, we're going to have one last speaker and then we're going to have...
Nick Schlecker, 40 North West Street. I just want to run through some quick numbers here. Final number, which my house would be assessed at is 550,000, give or take. We still owe 20% on the senior center and town hall. That will be coming up on January 1st. To come anywhere that projected up 22 million and 17 million, 20% of that is going to be, 20% of that is, 30%? Sorry. 39 million, we need 20% of that. But somewhere hypothetically between $7 and $8 million we're still out, that this town and the taxpayers are still going to have to hit on January 1st of their taxes. For lack of a better argument, that 7.5 million that's going to be coming on January 1st, that means on January 1st, my house is going to be $1,105 more next year, and that's without an override and taxes. If we go with the 7.1 number of an override, looking at that very quickly, $1,045. Our January tax bill is going to increase $2,150. That's $537.50 per quarter and $179.16 a month. That seems like a massive, massive number. I agree with Bill, and I know we don't always eat eye to eye, that you do have to have this at the town meeting. My thing is, it is going to pass at a town meeting. There's going to be enough people to stand up and this is going to go through. Guaranteed. Neighbors are not going to sit there with their neighbors and go, "I'm going to say yes, you're going to say no." You're going to have some of that. Most people are going to sit there and go, put it on a ballot and let the people go into the booth by themselves and vote yes or no. That's what you're looking at. I think what we're doing is we're going to have Norton neighbors play out at town, at town meeting, and it's going to be very messy. I don't think just messy in terms of confusion, because I think you're going to have plenty of that. I don't think people are going to know what's going on. I think there's going to be too many spots and spaces and everything else, I'm totally on board. This needs to go to a ballot. Put it on a ballot. It's got to come back to town meeting anyway. No one's taking away anybody's choice. Your choice is, go to the polls, vote yes or no. You guys give us the number. What is the number that we need? Everyone gets to vote, how they feel, you don't have to feel the peer pressure within a, within a town meeting. Passes over the, passes or fails on the ballot election, it then goes to town meeting and everyone walks away. Why are we going to sit here and play Norton neighbors and all this social media crap that's going to play out right in front of us and make this town look really, really bad? Put it on a ballot, put it into the polls and get it done.
Way to go, Nick. Mr. Chair, can I address a couple of things that Loretta had said? I, I guess, I guess I'm missing the, you know, the, I guess I'm missing the, the point, or maybe we're missing the point of what town meeting is supposed to do, right? Like, town meeting is supposed to be there for us to, for the town, which is the legislative branch, to discuss issues before voting on them. Okay? So when, so no one is saying that, that a ballot vote or town meeting is, I don't think superior. It's, town meeting is where the legislative branch debates and decides what's going to happen. So when you just say, "Well, we won't discuss it at town meeting," you're essentially saying, I don't even know why that's even a discussion that we're having. Like, of course we have to discuss it at town meeting, of course it has to be at town meeting, because if we don't discuss it at town meeting, then the legislative branch hasn't had a chance to discuss it. I just, I don't, I don't understand.
I'm not calling anybody saying not to discuss it at town meeting.
Yeah. Well, if you put it on the ballot first, that's what I'm saying.
Well, that's the theme though, here in the last 10 minutes, is people are thinking that we're not going to put it on the ballot, not going to discuss it. That's, that's never been said here. So, so people are making assumptions for no reason, and I don't understand why.
Okay, I'll explain. So I think what's happening is that, because there's been, it's been floated a few times that we will have a ballot vote first.
Right.
If, if the ballot vote happens first and there is no, where there has been no discussion about it, and the overrides do not pass on those ballot votes, then there will never be a discussion at town meeting about the, about those overrides, because they did, they already did not pass.
Correct.
So there will never have been an opportunity for the town, for town meeting to discuss it, because the ballot will have already decided prior to it being on, prior to it ever even coming to a town.
Which is why I was saying, as town councilor advised, if the ballot vote came before the town meeting, because there was not that open forum and discussion, you would have to have a special meeting to have that open forum discussion before the ballot. And a FinCom meeting doesn't count as that open forum discussion, it would have to be like a posted, open...
Public care.
Public caring.
So that's why.
That's, that's why, that's why.
You have to have a discussion before the ballot vote. So whether you do it at town meeting or you do it at a special meeting...
I'd like to get confirmation on that, because I don't think that's the key, but, but either way.
I mean, I was pretty clear on it, but yeah, I'd get council's opinion, I'm happy that.
But wouldn't that be better? Like, let the people talk about it, let them come to a meeting and get all the educational stuff they need, prior to just people yelling at each other.
So, so I'm looking, I mean, I'm looking at the timeline, we have to have something in place by June 1st, and that would be the, we have to have at least, I think, I forget who said it, at least the 1% budget in place first, by July 1st. Yeah.
If, if we're concerned about things getting confusing, the more steps we're adding to it, the more confusing we're making it, right? And I, I have a concern with voter apathy, right? When we, when we have these discussions and we, we set a course, and now we start shifting everything around, this is where people get disenfranchised with politics, elections, voting.
In all fairness, this has been shifted multiple times since we started talking about it a few months back. It's, it's up and down and up and, I mean, at one point I wanted to put it on the April ballot and that was shot down, so.
Well, we didn't, we didn't have this.
And then it was, so I mean, it's, it's been, yeah, and I still don't think we have enough information to provide the proper information to everybody, but, I don't know, what does everybody think? What do you want to do? I'm open for motions.
I think we probably, Mr. Chair, I think we, we need to vote on the budget, right? We need to vote on, on the two, uh, sorry, I'm fading fast here.
The four and the 6.5.
Yeah, the two override options. Sorry. And so we will have to either, you know, vote on whether or not to, is it recommend those budgets or vote on recommending those budgets?
So we could vote on recommending the four and the 6.5 million to town meeting? We can do a multiple of different, I mean, however.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Roger.
Just before we start voting on things, I just, I just want to make sure that I understand where we're headed. Because I've been sitting in these meetings for the last two months, at least, listening to several members of the board say, "Hey, let's put it on a ballot first before it goes to town meeting." And then that was shot down. And then I heard another person, after that got shot down, say, "Hey, we should put this on a ballot first." And then we said, "Well, no, we don't have enough time to put it on the ballot." So, I think the, the idea of putting it on, on a ballot before we go to town meeting is not a new idea and not an idea that's taking anybody's right away from doing anything. I think that both of those things are going to happen regardless of how this meeting ends tonight. And if we do one before the other, and the way my life has always worked is, I always built my budget for my business when I knew how much money I had, before I put my budget together. I never put my budget together and then said, "Well, let me go see if I can find more money." You have, I think we have to know what our number is before we can put our budget together. I don't think that if, if all we're doing is confusing people by sending them, telling them you're going to have two or three different options for how your town's going to run. I don't think that's a great idea. And I don't think, I think the town needs leadership. I don't think we need to have people saying, "Hey, we don't know what to do, you figure it out."
I don't think that's what we're saying at all. I think we're saying what we need is X, what we're looking for a compromise to not get everything we need, but some of what we need is Y. I don't think we're being irresponsible or haphazard, I think it was thought out and that's what we all agree upon.
But I think we need to do that and have that number, whatever that number is, before you put your budget together, you have to know how much money you have.
Again, we know that. We certainly know a lot more than we first want to put it.
I don't think any of us know how much money we're going to have, because nobody knows whether we're going to have an override or not.
So you're saying you'd like to do a ballot first?
My opinion would be to do a ballot first, a ballot election first.
So that would require a special election?
We're going to have to have a special election anyway, because you know one of those is going to pass at town meeting, or something's going to pass at town meeting, you're going to have to have a special election anyway. So I don't know why we're hesitant to do it.
Call it what it is, people's minds are made up. You're, you're pretty much a yes or no.
So, so is that a motion for a special election or is that just your opinion?
I don't know what number we should put on that. Or do we put all the, three numbers on it?
I'll give a yes, but I... I'll make a motion then to, to approve the, to recommend the $4 million override budget as presented by the town manager and FinCom.
A second.
To, okay, to town meeting?
Yep.
And a special election, correct?
We don't have to, we don't have to...
Okay, okay. Yeah, town meeting.
I'm just focusing on the article that's on...
Gotcha.
In our, in our place.
Packet, yeah, okay.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to, to recommend the $4 million override budget to town meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll make a motion to recommend the $6.5 million override budget as presented by town manager and FinCom to the town meeting.
A second.
Motion, a second, for the, to recommend the $6.5 million override budget to town meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote aye on that as well. All opposed?
Aye.
Did you say yes or no? Aye. Aye opposed or aye? This is just to put, to put it on the town meeting. So that it be... Where'd you get that, Jim?
One, one.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
So, all, will all three of those budgets be available at town meeting? They will all be available?
Would you make them all available?
Okay. All right. And anyone can move an article at town meeting and/or make a recommending issue on the budget.
Right. So do we have any other motions?
Mr. Chair? I recommend we have a special election prior to town meeting for the $6.5 million override.
Okay, logistically, Mike, we need, what, 35 days?
35 days.
So what does that mean?
You need to have a, if you're going to have it on a Saturday, it would need, in a public forum before that.
So what do you need? Oh, sorry, it would be a Saturday, it'd be 11, the 11.
And you need a motion to...
Make that motion, have that on June 11. That would mean...
June, June 11.
I'm going to throw them on.
May 11, it's a Saturday.
I'm looking.
June 8.
Yeah, so it's right in front of you.
So I meant my motion to make it on June 8.
All right. I'll do a second. A motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
No. Mr. Chair, I think there's something that's being left out, which is you, there's still town meeting scheduled for...
Yep.
The meeting for town.
So at that point, we would have to postpone town meeting, correct?
Say that again?
We would then have to postpone town meeting? Or open it and then continue it? Is that how it would work?
You wouldn't have to, that depends on what you want to do. You could always go to town meeting and see if town meeting approves the $6.5 million budget and then it passes that on June 8, then you don't have to come back. Or you could postpone town meeting until after June 8, that's up to...
So, please, Mr. Chair?
I'd rather, I'd just say, Mr. Chair? I'd rather wait to know how much money we're going to have before we put a budget together for the town.
Okay, so is that a motion? To postpone town meeting?
I don't know if it's postponed or to the...
That would work, man.
Well, now, now you have the options. You could postpone town meeting, we'll clarify, I'll clarify it with Lauren how you do that, or you could have town meeting on the regular scheduled date and have someone make a motion not to take up the budget on that night and hopefully...
Any, anybody can make a motion on the floor, though.
Right.
They're gonna take away their right to do so. That seems like a good idea.
So, what do you think? Is there a motion then?
I don't. I think you should know what you have for money before you make a budget.
I mean, because it's important for, 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 I don't think it's...
I have some question. Um, so, the article was so...
One second, one second, we're in the middle, we're, we're reading here.
Sorry, sorry, I had somebody in the house.
And I'm not saying, not taking away anything from what FinCom has done or any of that. I'm just saying that if it's gonna pass as the ballot, then it's gonna pass at the ballot. If it's not, then it's not, and if it's not, then we don't need to discuss it at town meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Okay, so is that a motion?
I don't know how, I don't know how you legally postpone your town meeting. I don't know how you do it.
So, what would the motion be?
Or continue town meeting.
Who, who are you looking for, Mike?
By the way, just for the record, this sounds a lot less confusing.
Right?
We're looking at some health, is that what you're doing? Yeah. You're waiting on Lauren?
I mean, I think, did we discuss, before I checked, did we discuss this before when I went out? And I came back in where she said we could send out messages, social media, town website, um, tell, tell people that we're not gonna be, um, taking up anything on the scheduled date of town meeting, and then you have the moderator, someone from the select board, could be someone from finance committee, and the town clerk go that night.
And just continue.
Open it, continuing.
Yeah.
So, now, just looking at the calendar, right? The special election is June 8th, and there's been no budget, I mean, a 1% budget, with that are passed, you now have got three weeks before July 1st, right?
Yeah, we can, I mean, we can schedule the, the fall Saturday after the election, after the special election.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you were gonna do it on a Monday, you'd have to come back by, um, June, um, June 17th, I think, is that a Monday to do that? That would give you time, give us a little time at the, to go through the finance committee and go over everything again.
Well, it's still, I mean, it would still be the 6.5 million. It's not like your commission's gonna do it, so, that, that, that information should already be, have launched or so. You can even do it the following Monday.
Yeah, hold on. You just said you didn't know the number.
You didn't know the number? What's that?
You just said you didn't know the number.
What number?
You got, you got... We were told 10 times, "We don't know what the number is."
We don't know what the real number is.
What the real number is. So, but now we're gonna just go ahead with the 6.5 and say that's the real number? I'm confused.
That's what we all just talked about.
We just talked...
We, we just, we just approved that budget.
Okay.
Did we not? Am I missing something?
So, that was your argument before, you said we don't even, I don't feel like we're ready to go with the number.
Yeah, I don't, and we didn't have the right number, that's right, so...
So, Mr. Chair, so you're gonna put the wrong number on the special election ballot?
There's the number that the board voted on, right?
No, we voted, we voted on...
Just because they don't agree with this.
Mr. Chair, we voted on what to put to town meeting. We didn't vote what to put on the ballot. And now we're not having town meeting, so, we're gonna have an election, we're gonna have a ballot first. So, so if the ba, so if the $6.5 million doesn't pass on the ballot, then there is no budget on the 6.5. There is no budget to be discussed.
It's the 1%. That's a fair...
Okay.
Any kind of confusion to you? Nope. So, we talking about postponing town meeting until the, the following Monday?
Why would you put it on a Monday when we just talked about not having enough time to have a discussion?
Well, I said Saturday, and then I said Monday, so whatever.
We, we...
I don't think it's a joke, do you?
No, no, I'm just saying, we just...
It's not funny, we're, we're actually trying to do something for the town here.
I understand that, but we just had a discussion about the logistics of the town meeting being too difficult on a Monday night and moving it to a, possibly moving it to a Saturday. So, I'm not sure what we're moving it to.
So, it's moving to a Saturday.
Okay.
I, I didn't make a motion, I just threw it out there.
Okay.
So, you wanna make a motion? You're welcome to.
You guys got it?
Which guys?
What's the date? You're gonna do it on the 8th?
The 8th would be the ballot.
The ballot.
On the fall Saturday, it'd be 15th, yeah. 15th.
So, make a motion to do town meeting on the 15th.
To, to continue it, Mike, or to...
Continue it.
To continue it, to...
June 15th, yeah.
So, is most, the motion have to stay continued on May 13th meeting to June 15th?
Yes.
So, make a motion to continue May 13th town meeting to June 15th.
Is there a second? Second, motion of the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
No.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
All right, do we have anything else?
Point of order, I think there's two, there's two meetings, there's the annual and the special.
Thank you. So, can we have the, the special town meeting on 13th still?
That, that has been posted, so...
So, yes, we have to. Good, okay. So, let's, so let's...
So, now we're gonna have two town meetings? We're gonna have two separate nights of town meeting?
Well, we were looking at, earlier, we were talking about three, four, five nights, so I think, I think this is, this is fine. So, so let's, so let's, one second. Let's, let's re-vote, if you wanna remake your motion to, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, um, asking town council if we can continue the special. Okay, I think your view would be the same.
Okay, so your motion was to continue town meeting, so now we, we would continue the special town meeting, so that'd be another motion.
So, make a motion to continue the special town meeting, May 13th to June 15th.
Second, motion of the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Yeah.
All right, anything else, guys? Nope, so I'll look for my favorite motion.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, who's that? Jack, go ahead, Jack.
Mr. Chair, um, I think you guys need to set a time that it gets moved to, I'm mistaken.
To continue to, oh, 'cause, yeah, 'cause it was changed for today. That's on Saturday. What is it usually, it's at 10 o'clock?
Earlier, yeah, earlier. Yeah, we should.
Yeah, because there'll be a lot of people that, that check in here.
(inaudible).
For the town meeting. Yeah, for the election, we can change the time.
Couple hours, a couple hours.
Do we have, do we have to set that?
What hours?
Do we have to set that right now? Yeah, she's okay.
Why don't we just have the same as we have earlier, the eight to five?
Well, with the town always the town on...
Eight to five, yeah.
So, do we have to move it or is it...
Should, um, should we schedule a, uh, public hearing?
I think we have to, but I think we technically have to...
Yeah, I, I think we haven't been announced, because we can set those...
But I think we should, you know, absolutely, uh, public hearing.
Yeah, no, I agree. Yeah, more people, information. So, so we, we would have to do a motion to, to do the time for the election, and I think either do another motion for the time on the, for the town meeting, or to do, amend the motion and re-vote. Does that make sense, Mike? That's okay. So, we, so we need two motions. We need one for the time for the election, right?
The day and time.
The day and time, we have, oh, so we need the time for that, and then we need a motion for the, the time of town meeting? Or could we amend the previous motion, or should we just do another one for that?
I would just amend the previous motion, reconsider the previous motion, and then set the time.
Okay, so you reconsider your motion?
Okay.
For town meeting and special town meeting?
We need a motion to reconsider.
Okay, I reconsider my motion to change, uh, town meeting from May 13th to June 15th and add the time, what's the time for?
I think 10, 10 a.m., right?[1676.54]